All right, we're gonna open our 2017 Hermosa Beach City Council candidate debate. And before we start, I'm gonna have Rick Lern to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Place your hand over your heart and repeat after me. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Rick. Okay, a couple of announcements, there's two other debates happening, so this is the first one. The next debate is October 5th, Thursday, 7:00 to 9:00 PM, and that's at the Beach House, and that's sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. So that's this coming Thursday of next week, October 5th, 7:00 at the Beach House. Leadership Hermosa is having a debate here at the City Council chambers on October 18th. So that will also be broadcast live like this one is. And I'm imagining that the Chamber of Commerce is probably shooting theirs, and that'll also end up in the City Channel most likely. Quick comment about before we start the debate on emergency preparedness. You know, actually, we're on a commission in the city for emergency preparedness. One of the things people ask me is time, what is the number one thing you can see in Puerto Rico and these other places? What's the number one thing that they have to, must, must have? And it's not money, or phone, or food, or anything like that, it's water. So what I would do is make sure, in the chance that we have a wide, citywide debate, or citywide disaster, we'll be very limited, other fire engines won't be coming here to speak up because they're gonna stay in their city. So we could have seven to 10 days, so make sure you have water and drinkable water, seven to 10 days. If you have a gas water heater, usually that's 40 gallons of water, so quick point about that. All right, now we're gonna start with the, the city council candidates will be starting the debate, and basically, the way the questions are gonna go, Stacy is in the number one position, so she will be first on the opening statements, and it'll go that direction, down to Pete Tucker. For closing statements, Pete Tucker will start the closing statements, and it'll work back this way. On the first question of the night, that will be for Matt, and then the second question will start with Mary Campbell, 3rd, and it can work that way. And then it's gonna jump each time, so the same candidate is not always the first out on answering a question. So, okay, we'll start with our opening statements, and each candidate has two minutes, and you may notice during the debate that sometimes I will ask the candidate to summarize, and they'll have like 15 or so seconds to complete their thoughts. So when I ask them to summarize, it does not mean they have to stop that second. So anyway, so Stacy, go ahead.
Thank you, Al, and thank you, everyone, for being here. Thank you for trusting me to serve as your council member. I'm the mother of three children, the wife of a small business owner, a homeowner, and an attorney. I share your desire to build a strong and resilient financial foundation for a clean, green, and safe community. As a member of your city council, I have supported funding capital improvements for our streets, sewers, sidewalks, storm drains, and South Park, earmarking new non-resident tax revenues to fund our fire station improvements, allocating additional resources to our police department, establishing the citywide ban on smoking, and enforcing the existing ban on short-term vacation rentals in our residential zones. I supported ending the costly decades-long threat of litigation from oil companies, and supported business-friendly measures like approving A-frame signs, extending holiday parking hours, and cleaning up our downtown. After years of citizens' input and countless meetings and discussions about replacing our 40-year-old general plan, we finally have a new forward-looking plan Hermosa. This plan meets the California state requirements, continues to place tough limits on population growth and density, while preserving the best aspects of our unique beach community. This plan will allow us to return local control of land use decisions to the people of Hermosa, saving our residents and business owners' time, money, and frustration of dealing with the state agency that didn't always have Hermosa's best interest at heart. In looking towards the next five years, I'm prepared to deal with the important decisions connected with the transition to a vastly improved fire service, the protection and preservation of open space, the proposed downtown hotel, and other private and public improvements. I will continue to build consensus on city council while working with residents and business owners alike to move the city forward. Thank you to all those who are here today in chambers and everyone watching from home.
Thanks, Stacy. Matt?
Thank you, Al. Thank you for everybody coming out here tonight, and I want to begin by acknowledging all the candidates that are up here. When I first got in this, I didn't really realize the amount of time and commitment it actually takes. So even serving on council, I have the greatest respect for the people who serve our community. It's a, it's a, it's a great honor to go ahead and also be up here with Mr. Peter Tucker and Mr. Haney Van Gary. They both appointed me to my commission. I'm the city commissioner for the Emergency Preparedness Commission. To give you a little bit of background about myself, born and raised here in Southern California. Started the early part of my life in Santa Monica, and I grew up in Thousand Oaks, attended college at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, and came back and started working in Los Angeles in the movie studios. I spent the early part of my career bouncing around between Disney and Universal. For the last 10 years, I've been working as a business process engineer, as a consultant. I currently work for the United States Navy as a contractor, and also served with them as a reserve. One of the biggest questions I'm always asked, I think is probably the most important question to ask any candidate, is why, why do you want to do this? Why do you want to run for city council? And honestly, the biggest issue for me, I felt that after everything we went through after the oil, I really thought our city was gonna come back together and be a beach community. And the big issue, I think, right now facing this city is carbon neutrality. And I find it a very divisive political issue, and I really want to see us become a beach community again. So I'm definitely running on a platform to bring us all back together. Another aspect of my platform is I'm very pro-public safety. As I mentioned earlier, I'm already on the Emergency Preparedness Commission. Also, I'm an instructor and a member of our CERT program, which is very important in case of a natural disaster. I'm part of Neighborhood Watch, I'm a Neighborhood Watch block captain. Excuse me. So these are the areas that I want to focus on. The main reason why I want to focus on public safety is seeing what happened to our fire station and ultimately our fire service. We let it get neglected to where it got. We got to a point where we couldn't, we couldn't resolve our fire department, we had to go ahead and outsource it. So I think it should be a lesson learned there from the city, that we need to focus on public safety. Last part?
You can summarize.
Yes, Al, thanks. The last part I want to focus on is, I think we have an overregulation problem. We learned this from the code enforcement study, that this city is notoriously anti-business, or not pro-business. And with the code enforcement issue, I'm gonna go ahead and work on deregulating businesses.
Thanks, Matt. Mary?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here and taking an interest in this truly important election, and also thank you, Al and Benson, for all the work he has put in to have us have this forum event tonight. I'm looking forward to addressing your questions and giving you as complete a picture as I can about how I think, how I operate, and what I would bring to the city council if elected in November. I would consider it a great honor to serve the residents and businesses of Hermosa Beach, and I would bring a track record of focused, open-minded, and competent leadership to our city council. I would also bring a fresh voice and some new perspectives. South Bay's been my home for the last 17 years, 11 years in Hermosa, and nine years a homeowner in Hermosa. And when people say, "Why do you want to run, Mary?", I say very simply, "I want to be able to contribute positively to forward progress in our city." And there are some very huge and important things that we need to accomplish together in the next five years. In 2013, I was elected to your school, your Hermosa Beach School Board, and it's now my fourth year. At that time, I also became involved, very involved in the community's efforts to defeat oil drilling in our city, which happily, after two years in the making, we were successfully, we were successful in March of 2015. Last year, while serving as school board president, our district successfully passed a much-needed school facilities bond to address severe overcrowding and aging facilities. This bond is absolutely vital to preserving Hermosa's long tradition of outstanding public schools for the next several generations of Hermosa kids and families. So I have worked hard, and I have fought hard, for what I believe was important for the future of this community, and it has only strengthened my commitment to Hermosa's future. I want to preserve Hermosa's values, and I also want to help lead to its brightest possible future. I bring 17 years of executive leadership experience and business expertise to the table. As an organizational psychologist, what I do for a living is I actually help organizations to become more effective, more efficient, more high-performing, through better leadership, through an optimization of resources, and through fiscal accountability and responsibility. That's what I do for a living, and I understand complex systems. I think this will be an asset to the city council if I were to be elected. I think that I would like to bring my experience to Hermosa Beach City Council at this truly legacy-building time, as we build our city together. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Haney?
Thank you, Al. I wanted to thank Al and the Hermosa Beach Neighborhood Association for hosting this debate. This is a great opportunity for all of you to hear what we have to say, and I think Al is gonna allow people to ask questions as well, which is great. I also wanted to thank my wife, Deana, and my two kids. Those of you that know me well know that I went through an actual voting process in my household to see whether or not I should rerun for council. And it was a closed vote, and I think my wife had to make, had to make the call, to make the decision, so I really appreciate their support. So a little bit of background about me, I'm an engineer by background, and then became a lawyer, did environmental work, have about 30 years almost of experience in the engineering and the legal world, and have been honored to serve on the council here for the last four years. Now, through the service on the council, I'm gonna go through some of the things that I feel that we've accomplished, that I'm proud of. And throughout tonight, you're gonna hear me say "we", not "I", because I think collectively we acted as a council, worked together to solve a lot of the problems and the issues that the city had. Most of the issues that are of significance were actually voted unanimously by the council, even though we may disagree on some things. The entire council works together, so with the council member that's here on the dais, Stacy Armato, and the three other council members that are not here, we all work together collectively to make a lot of these big, important decisions for the city, and I'm gonna go through a few of them real quick that I'm proud of, and I know Stacy mentioned a few of them, so some of them might be repetitive. But working together, and at least in the last two years, we have a unanimous vote on the budgets that we adopted. We also have unanimous votes in approving all the contracts for all the unions that work for the city. We also collectively eliminated essentially all the risk for oil drilling in Hermosa Beach, probably forever. We funded a new firehouse and upgraded our fire services. We funded collectively over the last four years over $25 million in infrastructure projects and upgrades, that includes streets, sewers, parks, and obviously, one of the most recent ones is the South Park, which I know a lot of you have gone to, and that work is still ongoing. We worked with the school board members and parents of our community to get funding for a new school and upgrading existing schools. We completed a solar panel installation project on the community center that protected that roof of the community center, and will basically essentially pay for itself. We implemented a facility improvement for various city buildings, including this building here, the Clark Building, and the community center, which are still ongoing. We helped our small businesses, I know Stacy mentioned a few of these things. We upgraded the parking meters in downtown, so people can use their credit cards when they go to our businesses in downtown.
Haney, you can summarize.
Okay. Well, to summarize, one of the last thing I'll mention, two years ago, I started this community meeting, which basically allows the community to get to know what's going on in the city, ask questions. We meet once a month here in city council chambers, I'm very proud of that process. It allows me to answer questions, it allows the community to interact, and I'm looking forward to, if I get elected, to continue that dialogue. And then lastly, people ask, my colleagues answer, "Why do you want to run again?" And I think my main thing, I want to run again, is because when I go to Tower 12, people there think I'm the mayor still, and they give me a really nice table. So if I get re-elected again, I maybe have the chance of that happening again. Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Haney. Trent?
Hello, good evening, and thank you for all, thank you for coming tonight. I moved to the South Bay in 1984, and I've lived in Hermosa since 2003. I'm married to my wife, Ann, for 25 years, and we have our daughter, Taylor, who attends Redondo Union High School. I've been an AYSO coach since 2013, both summer and fall, and I recently retired from that so that I could spend my time at my job, and also running for council, and should I be elected a council member. In the spring, I had 22 ninth and 10th grade girls on my team, and we won the championship, and I'm very proud of that. Moving on, I am running because I feel that I could offer constructive and inspirational leadership to the city of Hermosa and the council. My core message puts Hermosa Beach first. I believe that we have, for a long time, not focused on the needs of our city. Our tax dollars need to be spent on visible, usable improvements that we can all benefit from. And things, some of the low-hanging fruit, and the things that we've been talking about for years are like our sewers and our streets. But we also could spend a lot more money on our other public places, such as our city parks, such as our green belt, and a whole host of other things that we could spend our money on here, that we could use and see. The city buildings, for example, we've talked about that a lot, and I think right now we're studying the library. And, for example, the library would be one of the first things that I would think that would be, we could rework, because learning has changed so much. Education has changed. The information that comes down is completely different. So we, we should focus on improving Hermosa, and Hermosa first. Other things I would support would be our businesses, for example, the Skechers Project. There is no reason why we should not be working very closely with Skechers to put that in, because there's a risk that we will lose that project. Skechers is a publicly-held company, okay? The Greenbergs own most of the stock, but they could back out of the deal if their stockholders wanted them to move to, say, Torrance. So we really need to focus on that. We also need to focus on getting the Strand and Pier project in, because we need to replace the existing structures on the pier that are vacant.
Trent, summarize.
And I'll summarize by saying, I also believe in transparent Hermosa governance, that is the act of governing. I want to support the reconstruction of our schools, and I want to upgrade our police and fire services now that we've moved into the county. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thanks, Trent. Pete?
Thank you. First, I want to thank Alan for all your work. Your staff report was marvelous, I had to go buy some more ink just to print it out because we kept getting updates. And also, if you go to my website, electpetertucker.com, tomorrow I'll have all the minutes of this meeting, so you can see what we all said, and hopefully I'll record them accordingly. First, I want to thank my wife, Sienna, for allowing me to run for city council to represent you, the residents. To everyone in attendance and those watching from home, thank you for taking the time to hear how together we can continue to make Hermosa Beach the best little beach city. I'm Peter Tucker, candidate for Hermosa Beach Council, asking for your vote to represent you, the residents of Hermosa Beach. I'm a 47-year resident of Hermosa Beach, and currently, I have senior, I am a senior building inspector, and I've been a general building contractor for over 42 years. I've raised two sons in this community, they went to all our school systems, and we played all in the local youth sports activities. I have over 35 years of community service on projects such as the Beach City Toy Drive, the Tim Kelly Statue, Veterans Are Timeless Memorial, Fittner Windmill, and the Surf Memorial, and many other community projects. I've served as your planning commissioner for 12 years, and then was elected as your city councilman representative for 12 years. With my civic and professional building background, together we can move the goals of Hermosa Beach and the city infrastructure projects forward in a common sense approach, while remembering Hermosa's past as we build the city's future. I will focus on these aspects as your city councilman, to see the completion of the aviation Pacific Coast Highway Corridor. Hermosa Beach has already invested $1 million for an EIR study with Caltrans to make these corridors a safe, sustainable, and efficient transportation system. This is probably more than we really invested in a lot of our even CIP projects. This is a very important project for the city. I will ensure a common sense approach to modernizing our city facilities. Future developments, such as the Mermaid Site, Skechers, and others, I will ask developers to contribute to improvements within the city of Hermosa Beach.
Pete, you can summarize.
I will not support the CCA, known as the Community Choice Aggregation or Hermosa Power Utility. I think today, the efficiency of the electrical system and how we build buildings has made that a mute point. Sewer improvement plan, I think we need to start construction and have an oversight committee of the funding. Please go to my website, electpetertucker.com, to see other programs that I feel need to be considered, so that we never lose sight of our heritage and our beloved beach culture. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Okay, we'll go to debate question number one, Matt is gonna be first up on that, and then when we go to debate question two, Mary, we'll be starting with that. So debate question one, like Pete mentioned here, these candidates have been getting a mountain of information from me, and I would say if they printed it all, I don't know the exact thickness, could approach a telephone book. So that's how many, we've just completed our, what's called our Plan Hermosa, which is a thing that's been working, we've been working on for four years, and so that was just adopted by the city council. There's many other points that are also within the city council agendas, that they've also gotten documents relating to that. So the first question we'll be talking about is, in the document, is the Hermosa Beach Action Agenda, and that was generated by using a strategic planning process. So all the city council members met with a strategic planner, and they worked on what items, what they wanted to target for action. They came up with 12 targets for action, and the first question is gonna relate to, out of those 12 targets, which one do they think is the best? By the way, the documents, you can go to this website, and every one of the documents is on that website. Right at the top of the page is all the questions for tonight's debate. If you're watching live, you can read what the questions are, and then all the documents are there. So anyways, this question has to do with the Hermosa Beach Action Agenda, and basically there's 12 targets for action. And give us your list of the priority projects and issues from the 12 targets for action that absolutely must go forward in 2018. Why should these projects be addressed and completed? Matt?
Thank you, Al. I want to go and recognize Al for the amount of work he put in on this. He wasn't kidding when he said it is almost a phone book, but he spent a lot of time sending a lot of emails out to all of us, so, thank you, Al, appreciate it. So of the 12 priorities, I selected three, and first and foremost, I would say, our financial policies, because everything we do basically comes down to money. We have a lot of projects that we have on the table, but really, a lot of them don't happen because of funding. So basically, our funding and our economic development for the city has got to be the highest priority. And obviously, the appearance Strand Hotel is gonna be a great revenue source for our city. The second one I looked at is, is my, when it comes down to it, basically, everything comes down to, it's either public safety or infrastructure. I believe those are the two biggest priorities for our city. So number five would be our infrastructure. We have our city hall, our fire, our police, and our public works, which would be our public yard. I had a chance to go out there and visit with the superintendent, Ellis Freeman. He took me around the yard and showed me the deficiencies the city has. These are the people that run the city, this is what makes our city run, we gotta take care of the people, take care of us, so I think fixing that city yard should be a top priority. And then number 12 would be the board and commission reviews. Been outspoken advocate for that we need a public safety commission. Eighty percent, excuse me, 60% of our city revenue is spent on public safety, and I believe it has been under-prioritized for quite some time.
Matt, you can summarize.
Okay. And again, as I mentioned, as far as the fire service, we allowed our fire service to denigrate to the point where we actually had to go ahead and outsource it, we could not save it, so, there you go.
Thanks, Matt. Mary?
Yes. Well, first of all, I'd just like to say, all of these are very important, and that's why they're on the list of 12. And I also, in my schooling up on everything city-related, a lot of these are very well underway. So it's a matter of kind of calling out, for me, the top three priorities, I think at this point in time, cannot go unaddressed in this next year. So the first one is the first priority, which is the General Pan Local Coastal Plan. Now, we actually have the general plan done, but the local coastal plan, as I understand it, is a foundation that we need so that we can prepare to get permissions from the coastal commission, so that when we are ready to move, that we aren't held back in any way. And this is just something I've seen too often in organizations, where they, it's not, seems like you can push it off, and I think we just need to get going on that and make sure that we are queuing that up and getting ready. Second, I agree with Mr. McCool, financial policies, long-range financial plan. I think we have a very strong financial management process, and every year, this is ongoing. My thought was, given that we have this first long-range master plan in Hermosa Beach in almost 40 years, that there's probably a whole nother layer of financial planning and policy and forward-looking, looking for one point in time, big spike, so that, again, we don't get hung up, we're planning ahead for those, and that we don't get slowed down. Finally, city infrastructure master plan. This is pavement management, sidewalk, sewer, storm drain, streets and water quality, and so on. This cannot...
You can summarize.
Okay, yes, thank you. This is well underway as well, I listened to a couple of studies on Eighth Street sidewalks and storm drain just about a week ago, and again, we need to take care of this stuff as the foundation for the future, and if we don't, we could be in some serious, it's not as always as visible as you might want to see, but it's incredibly important. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Haney?
Thank you, Al. Of the priorities that we have, as Mary mentioned, all of them are significant and need to be followed through, but to pick out of them, I think the, and this is not in a particular order, but the financial policies, long-term plans, are something that we need to establish, and we are working on that. The second one is city infrastructure master plans, pavement management, sidewalk, plan, storms, sewer, storm assessment, living streets, and this is also in the works, and it's actually scheduled to be before us, the master plan to be before the council for approval during our October 10 meeting. So if you're interested in any of these issues, obviously, please participate in that meeting. Next is city building and facilities, city facilities, civic center, police, fire, city hall, public works, buildings, and opportunities, and that's also going to be discussed by us on a study session in October 4. So if you're interested in that, please participate in that as well. And then two other things that I think are already in the works, and I still think that you should maintain them as a priority, are the downtown revitalization process. We do have a task force that's already in place, it's been in the works probably for about a year now. Council Number Armato and Mayor Massey are on that task force, and I think that's already in the process and needs to continue. And then lastly, the Eighth Street project is restarted, it's been going on for over a year. It's a safe street to school, we invested a lot of time and money into it, and I think that needs to be continued as well.
Okay, thanks, Haney. Trent?
Thank you. Yes, I believe we should be spending our money, our time, our effort, and our energy on things that make a difference, such as rebuilding our sewers, our streets, our sidewalks, and infrastructure in the city that has been neglected for a long, long time. That would be number one. Number two, I believe, many of our city buildings need complete renovation or even replacement, and I would start with the library, and I would say the city yard needs a lot of TLC too. But the library is something that our children use, and I think that's very important. And today, with the amount of technology and the change that's coming, that needs to be renovated so that it is more, it's used more frequently. Also, the downtown revitalization, and that would include the Strand and Pier Hotel, and I'm also gonna include, again, on this Skechers, because that is a big, a big thing for the city, its economic development, a lot of the revenue from that is already baked into the cake. And when we talk about long-range financial plans, we are lucky here in Hermosa that we live in this great little city right on the beach, because property values here are rising fast, they're shooting skyward, and that brings in a lot of additional revenue, and really, we don't have to do anything for that, other than the price of the properties go up. So that's great, we can forecast off that.
Trent, summarize.
Lastly, I believe also the Eighth Street project, we've been kicking that around for a long time, it is a safe route to school, and it does need to be repaired, and that's something we can sink our teeth into and point to that we actually did, because a lot of times, we just talk about stuff and nothing happens.
Thanks, Trent. Pete?
Thank you. First, it'd be the, and these aren't in any real order, but the financial policies, without a financial policy, we can't implement any of these actions that we're talking about, so we really need to sit down, figure out where funds are gonna come from, so we can prioritize and get some of this done. Downtown revitalization, that's an important item, but also, we should not forget the PCH Aviation Business Corridor, that's a very tax-incentivized area where we really draw a lot of our sales tax from. Once again, I mentioned the PCH Aviation Corridor. The Eighth Street project, which is really an ADA improvement and safe route to school, this has been in the making for over four years, it should be completed hopefully, I want to see it by 2018, the summer of. City infrastructure plan, streets and sewers, that's a key element that we have funding for, and we need to get that moving. City buildings and facilities, we need to improve facilities so our employees can work in a positive environment, but without building consultant dreams of costly structures, I think we can do it more affordably than having consultants come in and tell us what we really need to do. The local coastal plan is another item that will help streamline building commercially and residentially. And I believe the last one is, and that's it. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Pete. Stacy?
Thank you, Al. In organizing any list of priorities, my first priority is to protect the health and safety of our residents, retain and enhance our sense of community, and represent the residents of Hermosa in an honest, open, and transparent manner. Before setting any spending priorities, I would work to ensure that the city was on a solid financial foundation with a comprehensive financial plan for our future. Some of these items on this list, like PCH Aviation, have been on our priority list for over a decade. That project is actually stalled once again by Caltrans. And you don't elect your council members to just develop a list of priorities. You elect us to get things done. I'm proud to be a part of a council that has completed many of these priorities, including our general plan, city infrastructure master plans that were just completed, and our labor contract negotiations with our unions. I'm also proud to report that these priorities are all moving forward right now. Our fire station is being upgraded, and we are meeting in a study session next week, if you would like to attend, to discuss how we prioritize improving all our municipal buildings, many of which were built in the 1950s and hardly upgraded since. Our Eighth Street sidewalk improvements should commence construction by the end of the year, and construction should commence shortly for our streets, sewers, sidewalks, and storm drains, now that our master plans have been completed.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Okay, now we're going to go to question two, and it deals with the exact same document. And like anybody who has a home budget or whatever, you have a wish list or whatever. So this is the same wish list, but not everything can be completed and addressed in 2018. So I'll go ahead with the question. Give us your list of the lower priority projects from the same 12 targets of action that can be moved to 2019 or later. Why should these projects be delayed, reduced, or canceled? Mary?
Okay, thank you. So the first one I selected, after I did some research, was the PCH Aviation. And I want to be very clear, because I'm a huge fan of this project. I've talked about it for years, in fact. I think it's incredibly important. But when I learned it was stalled out a little bit, and that Caltrans may have lost a little bit of energy toward it, I knew it wasn't something for next year, especially given all of the things that we just talked about are absolutely imminent and important to get to first. Now, the following year, I would be a huge fan of getting right back to the table of negotiation with Caltrans and trying to renew and re-energize that process. Second, the downtown revitalization, I'm another big fan of that, but what I have learned is that that particular plan is kind of a visionary plan with a lot of details that we are not prepared just quite yet to tackle in reality and in conversation. There is currently a subcommittee in the city, including members of council and HBPD, et cetera, that are working on basic, short-term solutions to the challenges we have in the downtown. This is like environmental design, better lighting, maybe a substation, and other enhancements, but creating that partnership so we can mitigate something. I think that's far more important right now. And lastly, I had said the boards and commissions review is something that could wait beyond next year. I asked around, and the prevailing thought is that they're doing a very good job. Sure, they should be reviewed, and we may need to add one or so down the line, but for right now, next year, I could bump it for another year. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Hanny?
Thank you, Al. So the first issue, and again, it's not because of lack of need, but because of the changes, is the PCH Aviation mobility improvements, and because of the passage of Measure M, which was just passed, and it's still in process, the funding process for Measure M. Caltrans has changed its positions. I know our city manager has went and met with them, and he's keeping us updated on what's going on. But the plan that we had a year, year and a half ago, has now changed from Caltrans' perspective. And because of the new passage of Measure M, there may be additional funding opportunities. So I wouldn't mind delaying that process and seeing where our best way we can get funding for it would be. Regarding the boards and commissions review, I think that can wait as well, because, again, the commissions that we currently have, I think, are doing a good job, and they can maybe improve in terms of various things that they want to do a little bit more of, but I think they're working well with the council. And also, in our meeting last night, the city council meeting, there was a proposal to potentially form two other commissions for ADA accessibility and for the arts, and our staff wasn't comfortable that we have enough resources staff-wise to be able to put together two additional commissions. So I suggested that maybe in the next year's budget, we would look at that and see where the resources would be. So to do that immediately without having funding and budget appropriation probably would not be helpful.
Summarize.
Thank you. And then the last thing I have is the encroachments. As much as I hate the encroachments process, and I think the city property should remain city property, we are currently in the middle of doing the upgrades for Eighth Street, which will get involved in encroachment issues, and it's probably going to go through the duration of 2018. And I think we should use this as a learning lesson, rather than do additional encroachment work next year, use that as a learning lesson, and defer the encroachment process until 2019.
Okay. Thanks, Hanny. Trent?
I am focused on spending our tax dollars, again, on visible and usable improvements. So anything that doesn't get us something that we can see and touch and use, I would be in favor of delaying. And atop of my list on this regard is our carbon neutrality plan. The state of California leads the world in carbon neutrality, and we're now just piggybacking on with what the state is doing. And I think that's a good thing, because I think, let them decide how to get there, and we're going to follow along. Focusing our efforts here with the little city on carbon neutrality doesn't get us anything, and our tax dollars tend to be frittered away. I would also say that the commissions and reviews we could put aside, and I would be in agreement with Hanny on the encroachments, that that is something that we could push down the road a little bit. But I'm really focused on taking our money and spending it on things that benefit the city of Hermosa and the residents and the guests. And it's not really complicated. It's things that we've neglected for a long time. We pay a lot of tax dollars to live here, and we should put that money back into our community. Things like the green belt and the sprinkler repairs. The sprinklers don't work right, and that's just unacceptable.
Trent, you can summarize.
That's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thanks, Trent. Pete?
Thank you. One that comes to mind is carbon neutrality. As in all our city services we do, sometimes we need to stop and assess the cost and possibility to implement fees to recover our costs, as we do with other services. Code enforcement, we need to review the policies and make them proactive rather than reactive with our residents and businesses. The boards and commission review, I think we have a great group of commissioners. Some have been on for many years, but the council should meet with them at least once a year to hear their concerns and which way the council would like to have them head the city. Meet and confer in MOUs. Without our employees, the goals that the city sets will never be accomplished. I've always said that the employees are part of the family of the city, and we need to make sure that they have the best tools and pay them as best we can to make sure we can retain these employees, because we have a hard time retaining the good employees. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. And Stacy?
Thank you. Well, first, we can adjust our carbon neutral goal. We heard from our community and about what they had to say about carbon neutrality, a concept that was originally adopted before I was on the city council, and we removed it entirely from our general plan. Instead, we have an adjusted goal to achieve carbon reduction for our municipality and aligned our community carbon reduction goals with the state reduction requirements. We will really need to hone in on what city facilities need our attention, because we can't afford to address them all. It'll be good to hear from the community next week at our study session on this topic. My hunch is that we should prioritize remodeling our police department next. We can also remove the priority of negotiating our MOUs, since we successfully negotiated three-year contracts with all of our unions that are now set to expire in 2019. And a big priority that's missing from this list, that I would love to have just crossed off, is the looming threat over our city for decades of oil litigation. The threat of another lawsuit or oil drilling in our town is officially dead, and I am very proud to have been a part of that. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Okay. Matt?
Thank you, Al. There are two particular items here that stuck out for me, as far as delay, reduce, or cancel. Probably nobody's surprised, who knows that I've been very outspoken about this issue for almost two years now, is the carbon neutrality. There's never been a comprehensive carbon neutrality plan in place. It seems like we buy some electric cars here, put some solar panels here, and this has never really been thought through completely. As we saw during the general plan, there's been a major backlash against us doing that on the municipal level. People just don't like being told what to do. And that's what carbon neutrality is at the community level, the government telling people what to do. As far as what is actually being done at the municipality level, we don't know what the cost is. We have, there's no cost-benefit analysis has ever been done on this. And most importantly, one of our consultants that came in here, he said, "There's no point in doing this unless you're going to market it and promote it, and it's about branding our city." So we already have a great brand, the best little beach city, but the plan here is to rebrand Hermosa Beach as the green idea city, and that's what carbon neutrality is all about. So I think we should kill that immediately. And the second one would be code enforcement. If anybody had a chance to attend the code enforcement study session, to give you an idea of how intrusive this government is as far as running businesses, to give you an idea of some of the ones I put down, Paul Hennessy, when he had his 40-year anniversary, had his balloons taken down by code enforcement. There's a trivia night that had to be stopped because there wasn't a permit. Then there was also an amateur comedy night that was stopped because there was...
Matt, you can summarize.
And the last one was with CrossFit. CrossFit actually was getting tickets for having their athletes run up and down their street. So these are the intrusive elements of code enforcement we need to go ahead and reduce. Thanks.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, we are going to go to question three. By the way, we'll go up to question five, and then we'll have audience questions. What's already been mentioned a couple times by some of our candidates is the downtown core revitalization. And basically, with that, it's been part of our, it's also folded into our general plan. And then, one of the things that they talk about is the parking garages, and that's what is related to this question. So for the downtown core revitalization, and also in Plan Hermosa, they talk about centralized parking, so using a parking structure for that. The possible spots in Hermosa Beach, again, this is just proposed, there's no plans on the table, but the one proposed spot is Parking Lot A. So that's a city surface lot, and it is on Hermosa Avenue and 11th Street. The second possible multi-level parking structure would be underground, and that would be at the civic center, so right here at city hall. If we built the new civic center, possibly, again, it's proposed, you could have underground parking right here, and then a city civic center on top. Then the third multi-level parking structure could be the community center, just across the street here, and kind of remodel there, put in parking underground, and maybe tennis courts on top. And then this is the same talking about and proposing also has gone into Plan Hermosa. So they're talking about centralized parking, using underground parking structures. And so anyway, that's the setup for this question. And Hanny will be taking this question first. What is your opinion regarding the financing and construction of one or more large, multi-level parking structures in order to service the visitor car parking for the Hermosa Beach downtown area? How would the city finance the construction of these multimillion-dollar parking structures? Hanny?
So I think, since the last time we discussed this, things are changing through the ride-sharing process, and it's commonly referred to as disruptive technologies, and it's disrupting our plan of what we've had put together regarding parking. So at this point, based on the changes in that landscape with ride-sharing technology, I'm not in favor of building any new multi-level parking structures in the downtown area. I think, basically, my fear factor is, I don't want to be building in structures that are going to be vacant in five to 10 years. I think it's changing every year, based on how people are using the ride-sharing technologies. I have a lot of people that I know that essentially stopped having cars. They don't own cars anymore. Their lease ends, and they just decided, "We're going to Uber or Lyft from now on." So until we get a good handle of where that is, I'm not interested in any process that the city would go into to build a structure. It'll probably take at least three to four years to actually get completed, and I think it would be a bad investment for us to put the resources into something like that when we really don't know where the landscape is going to be. If there is a need to have a building structure, to have other improvements being done, such as if we're building a new police department, and obviously, you need parking for that, or a new library, or new facilities, then we'll have that discussion. But I'm not interested in having two or three multi-level parking in downtown.
Summarize, Hanny.
I think I made my point. I'm not in favor of building multi-level parking structures, and if a parking structure is needed with other developments of financing, would it be done similar to other financing with other city structures, which we will be discussing again on the October 4th and the October 10th meetings coming up.
Thanks, Hanny. Trent?
Well, I will concede that parking structures are visible and usable. I don't want to see a new parking structure built in downtown either. I don't, I would say that the city doesn't want it, the town doesn't want it. In the three years now that I've been communicating with people around town and running for office, it's just not an issue that's come up. And I would say on parking, though, however, it is important, I think, that we look at our parking standards so that our businesses can expand, because the ride-sharing is there, Uber is there, people bike places, and businesses that want to expand, especially the restaurants, they need assistance. They can't be charged $35,000 every time they want to put in a few new tables in their facility. It's just ridiculous. And so, while I don't want to see big parking structures, I do want to see some changes to our parking regulations. And for example, when we do renovate, for example, the fire department, or the library, or up here in city hall, if we go underground with parking, because it's part of a bigger project and not just for parking, I think that's probably something we should look at.
Thanks, Trent. Pete?
Thank you. I'm going to start with Lot A, which is the downtown parking lot, and I think we need to wait and see what kind of development will happen at 11th Street. Previously, we had a developer who was going to build a hotel, and he was going to build a new structure with conference room and civic access, and open space on the top of this parking structure, and with no current loss of parking at his expense. We have a lot, the parking lot south of city hall, I think we need to wait to see what kind of needs we're going to need for the civic center renovations. All the lot behind the Bejewith Theater, which is Lot B, I think we need to ask the developer of the Mermaid site to build two to three additional floors of parking, which would add 130 spaces, and connect this lot, Parking Lot B to Lot C, in exchange for the vacation of Beach Drive and 13th Court. The civic center facility, I would elevate the tennis courts above the current, where the current courts are. This would add approximately 250 spaces, and also create a venue for large events, such as the Ed Foundation fundraiser, and provide more parking for theater events. This could be accomplished in less than a year. The city needs to ask a question. How many parking spaces does the city need?
Pete, you can summarize.
And can we handle more visitors who put more burden on our city services? The funding would come from possibly a BID, Business Investment District, partnerships or fees with developers, private investment firms, or, just as we all know it, parking rates. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Stacy?
Thank you. Any new parking that doesn't contribute to the financial well-being of Hermosa or doesn't benefit our residents isn't a high priority on my list. I'm certainly more concerned about residential parking and parking for our residents at city facilities that are impacted, like our community center. I don't support building more parking structures downtown. That real estate is too valuable. We have a parking structure downtown right now, and we need to preserve views where we can, not build three-story concrete parking structures. I support rethinking the parking configuration at the community center, and possibly also at the storage facility, to service the needs of the theater, community center, our library, civic center, city hall, farmer's market, Upper Pier, and encourage walking throughout our city. If financing was necessary, I would want to explore a similar financing scenario as we had with Parking Structure C. In that scenario, the county paid for the structure, and we're paying them back over time with revenue sharing. Finally, when determining the size of any proposed parking structure, we should remember the number of people that are using Lyft and Uber these days, and in the coming years, there's no need to overbuild when these services are becoming increasingly more popular. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Matt?
Thank you, Al. As far as this decision, the question asks, "What is your opinion?", is something that this matter, without any financial projections of time and cost and more important revenue[1769.21] this matter, without any financial projections of time and cost, and more important revenue from one of these parking structures, it's, it is just an opinion. I think everybody here agrees that the downtown parking in Lot A is definitely not an option. If we were to go with a parking structure or facility, if the financial numbers added up and made sense, it would definitely benefit having it up here in this area of town, because you want to have more foot traffic going down Pier Avenue to help the businesses. As far as our parking strategy, that needs to become a fluid document, as we've all mentioned, the technologies and change in how we travel and transport has changed. And most importantly, within the downtown area, everyone's using Uber and Lyft, but we don't have a designated drop-off spot that's safe for everybody, and that has become a safety, safety issue. Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Matt. Mary?
Okay, thanks. The way I was thinking about this, I don't feel like I have enough information yet to determine whether or not we do need even one multi-level parking structure in Hermosa Beach. But I would be curious to put that in the context of our future thriving economy, and that not only includes the businesses, but it also includes what happens at the Community Center. I ran into one of the members of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and he was sharing with me something I didn't know. He said they are talking about a proposal they might bring forth about a fairly dramatic potential to use to refurbish and use our theater, our community theater, for maybe some bigger venue acts and some draws to town. Now, that would bring more business and potentially more diners and shoppers as well. So, of the three options that have been on the table in, in proposed plans, there's, by the Civic Center, I see that as a little out of the way, definitely not at downtown at 11th Beach. One business owner said, "You mean you're going to drive them, you're going to let them drive all the way to the beach and get out and bypass all the businesses, hop to the sand?" I think the Community Center makes some sense. I would love if it, if it were something the city felt the need to pursue, be an underground parking structure, very centrally located, and it just would flow everyone down throughout the entire Pier Avenue corridor. And I think that's it.
You can summarize? Okay, thanks. All right, we will go on to debate question four. And basically, it relates in a way to parking the downtown, but it also relates to redevelopment in the downtown, so the downtown core revitalization. Really quickly, I'll summarize it. There's many buildings in the downtown area that were over 100 years old, built in the 1910s, '20s through the 1950s. Some people believe that these 60- to 100-year-old buildings provide a unique character and scale to, to the Hermosa Beach downtown area. So, the downtown core revitalization is, they're proposing numerous incentives, where if somebody owns a building currently, you can imagine an older building in the downtown area, for him to knock it down, he's going to have to put parking on the first floor, or dig under and put parking. So, there's parking requirements when he builds a new building. And one of the proposals to stimulate the downtown is to remove or reduce the parking requirements. Of course, this would stimulate the knocking down of buildings, and the most likely ones to go would be the older ones. So, in the documents that I'm talking about, Downtown Core Revitalization, and other documents, they're talking numerous times about increasing incentives and reducing parking requirements, or eliminating parking requirements in order to build a building. So, this will be for Trent, question four. What's your opinion regarding the reduction of parking requirements, zoning modifications, or any incentives that promote the demolition and redevelopment of 60- to 100-year-old single-story commercial buildings in the downtown area? How many of these older buildings, these older single-story buildings in the Hermosa Beach downtown should be knocked down and replaced with modern multi-story buildings? Trent?
Yeah, could you repeat the question again?
Yeah, I can do it. This is one, this is one of the ones where they got a lot of material on.
I believe that downtown Hermosa has a tremendous amount of character and charm, and I think it is uniquely different than anyplace else around the area because of our old downtown look and the old buildings. I don't believe it works exactly as the way Al said in the question. I believe it takes an owner, it takes an entrepreneur, it takes a vision, it takes development, it takes money, financing, all of these things. And while I do think we should relax our parking standards for somebody who owns a restaurant and wants to add a new kitchen or some tables, that doesn't mean that building's going to be knocked down and replaced. What it generally means is that the owner's going to have money to do what he wants to do, to expand, so that we all have a nicer place to eat, and we have new tables to sit at. That's what I think happens. I think people move to Hermosa, especially business owners, because they like the small town, they like the character, they want to be a small business owner, and they like the fact that it looks the way it does. So, in just relaxing the parking standards to some degree, I don't believe that just says everything's going to get mowed down and replaced. I don't believe that for a second. So, inherent in the question, I think it's a little bit of bias, but I would be in favor of relaxing some parking standards to some degree, so that our small businesses can make their place nicer and use their capital on their building, and not on a fictitious space that's not even created.
Thanks, Trent. Pete?
Thank you. As we all know, parking's always been a big topic of discussion in Hermosa Beach. Many cities, such as Manhattan, do not have requirements for these business districts. When a business comes in, they're told, "The parking is the parking," and they seem to thrive down there. Maybe we need to look at that. It's not asking someone to provide more parking in that area, as we all know, was very restrictive and really discouraged a lot of businesses. Let's remember, too, that to ask a property owner to tear his building down, he's going to kind of say, "Well, I owned the building free and clear, and I'm getting a whole lot of rent out of this. Why should I tear my building down? Most of the parcels downtown are small, and some share common walls. So, to tear one building down, you might have to tear the whole block down to assemble what we'd like. How much do we want to tear down? I don't know. Maybe what we ought to look at is asking and facilitating an expedited plan check and building permit process for the businesses down there, and ask, look at our zoning and move the facades, allow them to move their fronts or their store facades out maybe a foot into the right of way, as we do with residential. But all in all, Balboa, Huntington have the same types of buildings and parking supplies as Hermosa. Let's not lose the sight of our heritage and our beloved beach culture. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Stacy?
The answer is no. I don't promote or support the demolition of old buildings in our downtown. We also have a voted-on height limit downtown that limits what can be built down there. Building owners have various property rights that unless we want to entangle ourselves in litigation as a city, we don't want to infringe on as a council. But we do have a problem with our current parking requirements, and we saw another retail space disappear on Pier Avenue earlier this year because of our restrictive parking requirements. In this case, it made more sense for an existing business owner to expand their offices to the building next door, rather than building the second story on their existing building because of the high cost of in-lu fees in the latter scenario. The result, it's one less retail space on Upper Pier Avenue now. As we adopted in Plan Hermosa, we hope to provide incentives to property owners to preserve their buildings if they so choose. And also, in Plan Hermosa, we wanted to provide them a financially prudent way to expand their property, the routines retail on the ground floor and office space above. Council is scheduled to discuss parking requirements in our downtown in the coming months, so this issue will be addressed soon. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Matt?
Thank you, Al. I think I'm on the same page with everyone else here. As far as promoting the demolition of buildings in the downtown area, absolutely not. As far as how this should be handled, I believe the free market should take its place. If there's a business owner who wants to rent, and someone's willing to rent, then let it, let it happen, let the free market do its work. As far as the parking requirements and restrictions, you know, I agree with Mr. Tucker. I think that these need to be reduced significantly, but I will, I don't support promoting the demolition of buildings at all. Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Matt. Mary?
The way I thought about this question is I really struggled with it a little bit, and I realized, I felt it was the wrong question perhaps, or maybe not the full question. So, I'm generally in favor of reexamining, refining issues of parking requirements and zoning changes. And the reason that I'm in favor of taking a look at those things is that in organizations or cities, a lot of these things get stuck in time and never challenged, and time marches on, and you do need to take a look at what's going on, so that you can consistently create zoning and parking requirements that are, that match where you're going. So, we have this new plan, and I would be in favor of taking a look at these zoning questions in, against this master plan. And it's like someone I was talking to said, "If you get the zoning correct, then, then the free market will, will do the work to create the future of our city." I think that includes things like height limits that protect what we care about. I think that it's doable, that we can have our quaint, small town, and we don't have control over everyone's property, but I think that, that we can create a vision and aspire to, to what we want things to look like in 10, 20, 50, and 100 years, because the decisions now is, is what will drive that. But we have to get to the root of the issue and talk about questions like, yes, density, pedestrian-friendly, diverse population-friendly, business-friendly, values-friendly, and inside of that broader conversation, I think we would come to the right decisions that match where we're headed. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Hany?
Thanks, Al. As Mary mentioned, I thought this question was kind of a little tricky. I think the question seems to be talking about parking, but in a way, talking about historical preservation, so I think Al was setting us up. But in that respect, I am definitely, would not be in favor of destroying any of the older buildings that are, that make our downtown what, you know, how awesome our downtown is. I've also have not been in favor of reducing the parking requirements that we currently have. I would be amenable to looking into possible, evaluating possible incentives, accommodating specific cases on a case-by-case basis, when it makes sense. We've also had the council evaluated alternatives to make sure that we have more of a retail feel for the downtown rather than office feel, and, but we haven't really taken any action, specific actions on that, so hopefully that will be before us soon. But these are really complex issues, and the easy answer says, "We're going to remove the parking requirements," I don't think answers the question, and could create a lot more worse questions. And I think as far as how many, I think Al says, "How many buildings should we, is enough to destroy," which is, again, he's starting to set us up. I think my answer, there's, you know, basically, the ownership of the buildings in downtown is a private issue. These, these private owners have the ability to do whatever they can within the zoning requirements, and we're not going to be able to tell somebody, "Well, once five buildings are down, we can stop tearing down old buildings in downtown." Thank you.
Thanks, Hany. Okay, so we're going to debate question five. I'll try to get through that quickly, and then immediately to audience questions. So, if you have any questions, right after we finish this one right here, come on up to the podium, and so, think of your question right now, and we'll go to debate question five. So, this has to do with the downtown core revitalization also, a little bit different angle of what's happening. They're proposing on Hermosa Avenue in the downtown, some of the things they proposed, it's not a set plan or anything like that, is in the, in the parking conceptual master plan, the strategic plan, and whatever, is the, the removal of, possible removal of traffic lanes on Hermosa Avenue or diagonal parking. Why would they do that? Well, they, they want wider sidewalks, they're talking about wider sidewalks on Hermosa Avenue. So, if you have wider sidewalks, 20 feet wide, then you can have outdoor dining and that kind of things on up and down Hermosa Avenue. In order to get a 25, 20-foot-wide sidewalk, you'll have to either put in diagonal parking or possibly remove a traffic lane or two. So, that's what's, what's being talked about. I'll go right to the question, and Pete will be getting this one first. What's your opinion regarding diagonal parking on Hermosa Avenue, or the removal of any traffic lanes on Hermosa Avenue? When Hermosa Avenue is upgraded to 20, 20-foot-wide sidewalks, could a future city council vote to convert existing retail businesses into bars and restaurants with outdoor dining, as currently is the case on Pier Plaza? How would the city finance the recommendations proposed for downtown revitalization strategy? Pete?
Thank you. This is kind of like 10 years ago when we did the Upper Pier Avenue project. We had the same questions, and this, what we're talking about here is from a Roma study, and we haven't committed to any of what Al has mentioned. I feel that any kind of upgrades we do down there should go through a committee, as we did with Upper Pier. The committee took input from the public, and most of the residents and businesses wanted to see a different business area or district than the Pier Plaza. They wanted a family environment. And as we went through this process, we took a vote, finally came to the council, and it was narrowly approved by the council on a three-to-two vote to move forward. And luckily, that vote prevailed, and we've seen the end results. Financing could come from property owners along Hermosa Avenue, as was done on Pier Plaza. All the property owners there helped finance that for the improvements. There's probably transportation money from the rapid transit, because the buses go by there. But the funds could be a mix of many sources, but all in all, it needs to be fully vented with the public.
Pete, can you summarize?
And I think the, the outdoor dining and things like that, as we can see on Upper Pier, it works when they're on their property. So, it'll really be up to the community, and then the council will go from there. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Stacy?
Thanks, Al. There'll be no diagonal parking, removal of traffic lanes, or conversion of existing retail businesses into restaurants or bars on my watch, without loud, fully informed, and emphatic support by Hermosa voters. Widening of the sidewalks and removing of the obstructions, that would be a step in the right direction to improve pedestrian and accessibility access and mobility along Hermosa Avenue, assuming it didn't reduce our traffic lanes. We have a fair amount of restaurant choices in town right now. We need to encourage more retail to come into our town, to provide that adequate synergy in our downtown. I'm on the council downtown enhancement subcommittee right now, and we're coming back to council soon with a plan for increased cleanliness, lighting, and other elements designed to deter crime through environmental design. We could explore lighting districts, grant funding, allocating money from our general fund, as various sources funding for these improvements in our downtown. But I think at the end of the day, we need to remember, we can provide an environment where businesses can thrive, but we also need to keep in mind the community that we all want to live in. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Matt?
Thank you, Al. Again, this is one of these questions that asks, "What is your opinion?" The type of work I'm in, I'm not really permitted to give an opinion. I need to make data-driven, fact decisions. So, I don't think there's enough conclusive data on this to actually go ahead and make a decision, if there'd be a financial return on it. So, at this point, I would not, I would not encourage this type of development in the downtown area. Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Mary.
Yeah, as, as has been said, and as was said earlier, this downtown core revitalization strategy is not in play at this time, but it was a study in. And so, I think first and foremost, that what we're focusing right now, on right now downtown, which is the short-term, quicker solutions to deterring crime and creating a greater public safety are the right focus. Would I ever be in favor of discussing a more, a broader, more visionary plan for Hermosa Avenue? Certainly, I would. That's not a bad conversation. It would be a full conversation, as Stacy Armada was just saying, of course, and all the merits would have to be weighed accordingly. But it's premature at this time, and certainly, the idea, even the idea of reducing traffic lanes is probably PTSD, post-traumatic stress from Vista Del Mar at the moment, but that doesn't necessarily mean, that, how did that happen, anyway? It doesn't necessarily mean that it would never be a good idea, and yet, we don't know. So, I will say that I'm intrigued by the idea of transforming Hermosa, the Hermosa corridor. It's a valuable, valuable portion of downtown, and I don't think it always works that well. And I don't spend as much time there as I do on Pier Avenue, which works better. So, I think that's it for me.
Thanks, Mary. Hany?
So, I think, as everybody mentioned, this is something that was kind of provided to us in concept, and the city council has not taken any action on it. For me, to evaluate going further on this, we need a couple of things. One is we need significant public input, both from our chamber members, the businesses in the area, and our residents. And just so everybody's aware, if we're, at least my understanding is, the consideration, if, if the flow of traffic changes in Hermosa Avenue, I think we're talking primarily between 10th and 14th Streets. So, we're talking about four blocks, because I think the interpretation that I've read from people is, "We're turning this into a road diet," and, you know, the, not to mention commentary of Vista, Vista Del Mar. I don't think anybody in the council or anybody else has talked about reducing Hermosa Avenue to one lane throughout the, the street, and it would only apply if the businesses think that taking out one lane out of Hermosa Avenue for these four blocks would give them more sidewalk space, more angled parking allows people to drive a little bit slower so they can actually notice the stores, and, you know, be able to, you know, stop and actually get business from those stores. So, the idea is basically primarily related to businesses and residents, not slowing traffic, because obviously slowing traffic four blocks doesn't, doesn't do much for actually slowing traffic. And just on, on the Vista Del Mar, since Mary mentioned it, I'm sure maybe one of the questions will, will come up. Personally, I'm not in favor of what happened in Vista Del Mar. I may pretend Jeff DeClo and I are on a subcommittee trying to deal with this issue. I've had several meetings about it. I think it was definitely the bad thing to do is making these road diets without getting input from the community, and it's not something I would ever support here in Hermosa Beach.
Thanks, Hany. Trent?
Yeah, this was one of these studies that we paid for that offered us really nothing, nothing-
nothing visible or usable, and it was done by people who don't live in the city. I would not be in favor at all of closing down one lane to add in diagonal parking to downtown, to that, to the area. We need to the traffic to flow through there. We have a lot of commuter trips that go in and around the downtown, the pier area, and we need both lanes to make sure that the traffic flows smoothly and safely. If we did cut it down to one lane, we would have a traffic nightmare, and it would really, it would, it would stink like a sick oyster at low tide. It, it would cause so many problems, and people would be so unhappy and wondering why we did it. Like, for example, when we had to change Upper Pier. We spent all that money doing that because consultants told us to do it. They don't even live here. Look, we live here. This is our town. This is our tax dollars. And I think people like Hermosa Beach the way it is, and especially as something as visible and usable as a double lane of traffic each way down on Pier Avenue, we need to keep that the same.
Thanks, Trent. Okay, that's it. So we'll be going to audience questions. The only thing that I would say is, what you're going to have to do is, you're going to have to, you can line up if you want. You're going to have to pose the question so all city council candidates can answer the question. So you're not directing the question to one person. And so you're asking a basic question. Each city council mem- candidate will be answering the same question. All right? Yeah, go ahead. Thanks.
Hello. My question, since there seems to be some difference of opinion on carbon neutrality, is kind of two quick questions and maybe an opinion. One is, do you believe in climate change? Two is, is climate change man-made? And three is, projects such as the solar panels on the community center or other similar projects where they're environmentally favorable but don't cost any more money or have a payback like the solar panels on the community center? Do you, would you favor those if, if the costs are close to the same?
Okay. Stacy, you're next up.
All right. Thank you, Ira, for that question. I do believe in climate change. I do believe there are man-made contributions to climate change, and I was part of the council that approved the solar panels at our community center. It made financial sense for our community. We found out the payback would be approximately 11 years with a 25- to 30-year lifespan with many, many more years of opportunity, once we could expand and add some battery, batteries to it, and help us in the event of any kind of emergency. So those are projects that I would support. It has to have, it has to make financial sense, but it can also benefit the environment at the same time. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Matt?
Thank you, Al. Thank you, Ira. The question, first question is, do I believe in climate change, and is climate change real, and is it man-made? I am not a climate scientist, so I can only understand what I actually read. As far as it's being man-made or not, that I still, is, is kind of up in the air. But to answer your third, third question is that, as far as the solar panels, I'm a businessman, so if the numbers make sense, the numbers make sense, I support it no matter what. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Mary?
Yeah, first of all, I'd just like to point out that we, we don't even have a carbon-neutral goal in Hermosa Beach anymore. We have a carbon reduction goal. I know I'm not the first one to say that, but I think it's really important, because there's been a lot of contention around this issue. We are following the best practices of the most forward-thinking communities in this country. I believe in science, first and foremost. I do believe in client, the climate change science that I have been exposed to, and I do believe that the science has indicated that it is definitely contributed by man-made purposes. So couldn't be maybe more blatant and clear about that. As far as solar panels or other energy efficiency projects, it just makes no sense whatsoever to me that any business or community anywhere wouldn't consider these emerging technologies and smart, healthy, safe, superior forms of the future energy equation
Can summarize.
would not be something that would be considered. It is, it has to pencil out. It has to, it has to add to the community financially and from a position of, of health, safety, and wellness. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Haney?
So I do believe in climate change. I do believe that it, man-made operations facilitate it or increase it. And I am one of the four council members that voted for the solar panels on the community center, so obviously, I supported it, and I was out there and took a tour of the, of the, of the solar panels. And since then, I've actually went to our city website a couple of times to evaluate the production. You can go into our city website, and right on the left-hand side, you just can click and see how much power production those solar panels are providing. And as Matt mentioned, I'm a semi-businessman as well, so if the numbers make sense, I would support it. And I think everything that staff has told us, told us that the numbers make sense, the economics make sense, and if there's other future projects that make sense for us, I would support them as well. And there's also an element in solar production that's also good for emergency response, because if the solar panels are providing power that's stored in a battery, and we lose the other means of power, whether it's electricity coming from the grid or fuel, and we have the mechanism to
Can summarize.
power our cars, our, our city cars that are powered with electricity, and we have the solar panels to do that in our community center, then we have a full control and ability to be able to have more resources during an emergency.
Thanks, Haney. Trent?
Okay, the climate is always changing, that is for sure. You know, we had an ice age 10,000 years ago, and no one knows why, but the climate's always changing. Has man contributed to it? Possibly. Yeah, there's some, there's some, there's some evidence to that. However, the United States is cleaning up this faster than anybody in the world. The industry makes all the difference in how we're doing our carbon reductions. The, the automobile industry, the appliance industry, lighting, building, all of the, the gains in reductions, if you really look at it, are coming from American industry. In fact, 80% of the pollutants are gone since 1980. We've reduced, we've eliminated them, 80%. Also, you can Google on US.gov the word carbon sink, and you can see that most of the United States, the vast majority of the United States, is now what's called a carbon sink, meaning it's sucking up more carbon in the trees than we're producing. And that's because we've grown our forests back since before 1900s. I would say I'm also in favor of visible and usable improvements. So the solar panels, they're visible and they're usable, so I'm fine with it.
Oh, yeah. Hang on, hang on. There are discussions going on in the audience. Oh, yeah, can you take it outside? That'd be helpful. It's distracting to the candidates, since also the audio is going into the mics. Pete?
Thank you. Years ago, when I was on the council, we started really down this path when we all voted for what we called the Cool City. From there, we went to different venues. We had the, a committee to look at this. And is there climate change? Yeah, there's some climate change. Are we all contributing to it? Yeah, probably. But I think that as we're going through this, and we've been made aware of these changes in the climate, that for one, the state of California, through what we call Title 24 and the Green Code, we are compelled to reduce our carbon footprint, so to speak, and, and we're going to see a drastic reduction in that, hopefully, in the climate change. As we go through this, in the year 2020, and three more years, the state of California is, is mandating that we have net-zero homes. That will cost more money, but the state feels that that's good. I, I work in the building business, and I see these technologies coming onboard. And it's, when I tell people, really, this is an evolution, not a revolution. Some people at the beginning said, here's what we're going to do, but until we manufactured these products, it was too expensive. And as I tell people, every time you buy a new appliance, there's that little star on the box, you're helping with the climate. So I want to thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Next audience question. Mark?
Good evening. Currently, in the general plan approved by the city, there is a, part of it apparently is the master plan, well, it is, or the master plan for bikes, bike plan, master plan. And in that plan, apparently, the city wants to go ahead and put in bike paths all over the city, and I know right now, they're looking at doing that up on Prospect. And given that a lot of us have pushed back and didn't really ever approve the master bike plan ourselves, it was done by the city council, I'd like to know which ones of you moving forward want to put bike paths or bike boulevards or bike ways of some sort up on, up on Prospect, which is going to grind down the traffic to a halt. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Matt, you're next up.
Thank you, Al. Thank you, Mark. As far as this question, this actually came before city council, two meetings ago on this, and I, I know it's an issue as far as what's going to happen on Prospect. Depends if the data's there, but from what I'm hearing from the residents on Prospect, they don't want that. As far as the, the bike master plan, I'm, I'm a big bike rider. I love riding a bike, but I'm also realistic with my time management. So my bike riding usually happens on weekends. It's a recreational exercise, but during the week, I'm not using a bike for my major mode of transportation. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Mary?
Okay, I, I don't feel like I know enough about the bicycle master plan, although I've seen it and I've scanned it, and I, so I know there's, it's a multi-pronged approach. And I definitely, I have a lot of concern for people who do ride bikes and alternative forms of transportation that want to have some, some parity and some fairness as it pertains to how they can get around. And I know one of the things that's very concerning about bicycles and motorcycles and, and some of these alternative forms of transportation is safety. So certainly, if that ever became before me, I think it would be a pretty robust discussion about all of those kinds of things, the impact to traffic, the impact to residents, the impact to safety potentially, and then I think maybe we could come up with something of a compromise moving forward.
Thanks, Mary. Haney?
The issue that was before the council was basically whether or not the city should apply to get a grant for the money for the grant to evaluate Prospect, to see whether or not safety improvements in Prospect will be helpful. As most of you know, Prospect is, has schools or connected to, I think collectively, four schools. Safety issues in Prospect have been issued, including the time, actually, right the day before, we had the city council meeting. My city manager and I went out there to look at something else on Prospect, and we could tell, a lot of people don't stop on the stop signs, and those that stop immediately after a stop sign just speed up. It was four o'clock in the afternoon. So basically, there's concerns about the safety issues on Prospect. So I voted for that city to apply for that grant. That grant money, when it comes available, will evaluate safety issues. That recommendation will come back to council, and the council will make a decision based on that. I think that's the right thing to do. Why turn away money that's going to evaluate how we can make our city safer? So I definitely, definitely voted for that. As far as the, the big-picture master plan, there are some discussions, including the general plan, about, for example, some people were interested in having bike paths in PCH, and I was significantly opposed to that. I don't think that PCH is safe for bicycles. Unfortunately, we've had at least one recent death in, in PCH on Redondo Beach. So I'm in favor of having bikes when it's safe, but in PCH and other roads where our traffic people tell us it's not safe to do it, I would not be supporting it.
Thanks, Haney. Trent?
Yeah, bike lanes specifically for bikes, I don't believe belong on Prospect Avenue. In fact, I really don't believe they belong anywhere in Hermosa. The sharrows, like for example, down on Hermosa Avenue, I think work pretty well, so I'm okay with that. But individual bike lanes that would take up space on the road, I would not be in favor of. One thing I will say about bikes, and I own a bike, and I ride a bike, and I have fun on it, is that I would hope that we would start making the bikers follow the same rules as the cars, as they are supposed to. They, they go through the intersection right here at 25 miles an hour like nobody's going to hit them, and all of the people in the cars are put at jeopardy, because if you hit somebody on a bike in a car, basically, it's your fault. Okay? And when somebody's going through the intersection at 20 miles an hour, and you're in a car, and you just started out, and you're looking around, it's, it's dangerous. And I think we should ticket them if they do that. So I'm, I love bikes. I got a bike. You might see me riding around town on it. I don't think we should have bike lanes on Prospect. I'm okay with the sharrows, especially down along Hermosa Avenue. Thank you.
Thanks, Trent. Pete?
Thank you. Yeah, the bikes, and let's go back really years ago, the safety on Prospect has never really been addressed. I know the councils have tried to get that done. I know at the last council meeting, I believe it was Councilwoman Petty was not happy with the way the striping on the street had deteriorated, which is a key element in keeping you safe on that street. Making this a, a bike way or part of the bike plan, really, 70% of our residents really need their cars to get to work. We have no public transportation, and I've always felt that we need to really look at public transportation to get you down to corridors where you can get a connector bus to where you need to go, because most people are not going to ride their bike to work. The weekends, bicycles are everywhere in this community. It's more recreation and probably going downtown and going to the local stores. But we need to, you know, we need to look at the safety aspect. The government agency that we are asking the grant money for is also the government agency that has really pigeonholed the Caltrans project, according to Caltrans. For some reason, we can't make headway with South Bay Cog, but they're willing to come in and try to help us with Prospect, where if we got Pacific Coast Highway to where it was a more usable street
Pete, can you summarize?
and traffic flowed better, we wouldn't have the traffic on Prospect. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Stacy?
Thank you. As Councilmember Fangary explained, we approved funding a design with grant money to explore ways to make Prospect safer for pedestrians on a temporary basis. There was strong and overwhelming support from that neighborhood, from our schools, and from the Beach Cities Health District, among many other agencies that wrote in their support. This, again, is a temporary design, and it would involve installing bulbouts, painting new lines, installing some signage, using landscaping to improve the safety and visibility of our pedestrians. This is a safe route to school, one that I walk my own children on, and I see how dangerous it is. This was a great opportunity to improve the safety for the residents in that neighborhood and for our children.
Thanks, Stacy. All right, that completes that audience question. And Mary, you'll be next up with the next audience question. Jeff?
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Oh, you, have you got a mic? Okay.
Yeah, I got a mic. Thanks, Al. I don't know if I can work it, but I have a mic. There we go. Good evening. Currently, there's a California law in the Motor Vehicle Code 22500. This forbids obstruction of sidewalks by cars, trash cans, bicycle hoops, whatever, or excuse me, basketball hoops, whatever. The city has recently begun a 90-day public relations campaign to inform residents that it is illegal to block the sidewalk. After 90 days of education, the city is going to reevaluate the program to determine its next step. My question is simply this: if after 90 days, people are still obstructing sidewalks with cars or whatever, what would you do?
Okay, Jeff. Thanks, Matt. Mary?
Yeah, I was, I was present when this conversation was going on recently in a city council meeting, and I, I think I stepped up to the open mic and actually said I was very happy to hear the presentation because an education around clearing the sidewalks for pedestrians, and I live on 8th Street, which is a, a safe route to school. I walk my dogs up and down, and I almost get hit every day by, by one car or another that goes very fast, particularly up that street, or taxi, et cetera. So I'm in huge favor of this, this proposal to have this discussion. What my hope would be is that if we can create awareness about the risks, we could go a long way. That would be my hope. What I know and understand, and I've talked to residents who are very, also very, very concerned about the lack of parking and how they have, they're living in Hermosa Beach in such a way where they really rely on these sort of awkward parking arrangements that sometimes involve either going over a red line, which is actually technically not allowed as well, or parking over a sidewalk. So I think it starts with the, with the campaign. When the campaign is over, and there's an assessment about the, the outcome of that campaign, we see what we're observing, I think we go back to the table. I don't know what I would do at that point, but I think it's important enough to pursue the conversation to clear the walkways.
Thanks, Mary. Haney? Haney?
Thanks. And Jeff, that's a great question, and something, as you know, we've been dealing with, and Access Hermosa has been dealing with for a while. I live right off of 8th Street, so I see that pedestrians are always walking through 8th Street in the middle of the street, including strollers and people like you, Jeff, in wheelchairs, which is obviously not very safe. So I understand the issue. I'm really glad that the city is going through this educational program. I think Georgia gave us a presentation during, not the last council meeting, a council meeting before, which was great. I included the literature that she provided to us in my email that went out to our community, so I'm hoping to help with the educational process. And in the last community first meeting that I had, I actually had our Commissioner Al Benson here help me actually put it on the video and have the people in the meeting actually watch Georgia again give that presentation, because I think it's important to know the issues and how to address them. That said, we have, not just Hermosa Beach, all Beach Cities have significant parking issues in areas closer to the coast. So it's not easy for us to tell our residents in 90 days that you're done parking the sidewalk, and any car that's going to be on the sidewalk next week is going to get the ticket. That's just not practical. What I'm hoping we do after the 90 days is we could bring our code enforcement folks back, see how the educational process went, and look at staff providing recommendations and suggestions of how to address this issue, and hopefully, we'll have solutions that we can incorporate gradually that address the safety concerns, and also incorporate the concerns that our residents would have
Summarize.
about not being able to simply not park on their sidewalks, because there's not enough public spaces available.
Thanks, Haney. Trent?
Yes, I think we need to focus on the hot spots regarding the parking on the sidewalks, and one of them is definitely 8th Street. And the people, there's only a few parts of 8th Street that are really bad, and the people that park on the sidewalk have been doing it for, you know, 20 years. They know they're not supposed to park there, but the reason they park there is because they get away with it and they can do it. And an education plan is just really notification that, hey, we're going to start doing something about this, and so something needs to change. And that's why I'm a proponent of redoing 8th Street completely, so that it is a safe route to school, and it's got new sidewalks that you can't park on. And if you do, you will get a ticket. All right? And once you get a few tickets, you'll figure a way out. Now, I know that's kind of tough love, but seriously, on some of these places where people are parking and blocking it, and people are almost getting hit, our children have to walk out in the street, and people that are in your situation can't get up and down, especially on the streets like 8th Street and a few others, we need to address the problem. And the citizens that live there need to come to the table, too. They need to buck up and own a solution as well.
Trent? Okay. Thanks, Trent. Pete?
Thank you. This is not just an 8th Street problem, this is a citywide problem. I believe there's something in the vehicle code that says you can't block the sidewalks. I remember years ago, I championed an ordinance that said you cannot block the sidewalks, and the reason I did was I heard a story about a young boy who was going down, I believe, 3rd or 4th Street, had to veer out into the street because there was a car blocking the sidewalk and the driveway approach, and as he veered out into the street, if you want a good lesson on why we need to enforce this, that child was killed by a tryst truck. The car blocking the sidewalk and the access was his father's car. This is a true story. So I championed an ordinance for that. Somewhere, I'm really surprised that we keep going round and round with this. Somewhere, we have an ordinance that was written probably eight to 10 years ago to prevent this, and I believe the vehicle code also says that. But it's, you can ask my younger son, he got a ticket. And his older brother said, "How come I got a ticket? I was just parked over the sidewalk." He goes, "Call Dad." So he called me, and I said, "Well, I wrote the ordinance." He goes, "Never mind." So I think we need more education. This came up about three or four years ago over on Longfellow, same problem, but we need to enforce it, and hopefully, it'll go away. But we do have an ordinance, and it is a very dangerous situation for anyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Stacy?
Thank you. First and foremost, this plan was to focus only out of the gate on the safe routes to school, and I thought that was a wise place to start. We heard in the general plan process that if you give people a chance to comply, they'll likely do it on their own. So we're exploring that with this process, and I'm very hopeful that we live in a community where the majority of us would comply with those notices and not obstruct our sidewalks. Violations, as it stands right now, will only be administered in a form of citation on a complaint-by-complaint basis, which is how our code reads right now. But if after that 90-day period, we see that this is still a large problem that persists in our community, my thought is, our police department headed up by Georgia Mo in this particular scenario, should go to Access Hermosa and think about what we should do for Phase Two and present that to council before we move forward with anything more strict. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Matt?
Thank you, Al. First, I was wanting again to say a compliment to you, Jeff. I appreciate everything that you've done to bring awareness to this. I know myself, I probably wouldn't have thought about it until you began your activism, so I'm glad you brought this to everyone's attention. I was at the city council meeting with Georgia Mo, and Captain McKinnon had talked about this problem as far as what they're going to be doing for the 90 days. I'd rather wait until that 90 days to address what we're going to do after that. I believe our community cares about each other, that I think we're going to have a great compliance on this. But as far as what I would do after the 90 days, I want to see what happens first, before I go ahead and make a commitment on that.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Jeff, for that question. Next question? Jeff, come on up.
My question is not about code, it is not about ordinance, it's about character and integrity. For me, elected officials, you're applying for a job opening. You work for us, and for me, you need to have great character, integrity, be fair, all sorts of things. And what I've been seeing online lately doesn't, from a couple of people up here, does not have that integrity that I'm looking for in an elected official. Frankly, my 12-year-old would have his phone taken away and have a timeout for writing down some of those things. So my question is, are you all proud of everything you have online, because it's there forever? And should I base my vote or take into consideration your character based upon what I read, or should I just assume that if you are elected, you will be diplomatic and friendly and work with people and be fair? I guess that's my question to all of you.
Thank you. Haney, you're next up. You know what? Can we keep the conversation down as it's entering the microphones? Haney?
All right. Sam, thanks for the question. As most of you who monitor my social media stuff, I don't have a whole lot out there. I don't post that much. I'm trying to think now that you asked that question, what I have on. So I have to tell you, am I proud of what I have online? One thing I'm not proud of is that I'm a Chargers fan, and it was a Chargers game, and they're zero and three right now, so I'm probably going to remove that post. But on a serious note, the issues that I announce on social media are things about what's going on in the city, events that are going on. I try to scale down my big-picture national political positions and not address these issues for the most part. I deal mostly with local issues pertaining to Hermosa Beach, things pertaining to my family, and now that you posed a question, I can't think of anything that I'm not proud of. I don't think there's anything I'm going to go out there and delete. I'm going to maintain this campaign to be as positive and efficient as possible. I've had a chance to meet with all the candidates that are here and talk about the campaign, and some of us have made a commitment between us that we're going to keep this campaign clean and positive, and that's my plan.
Thanks, Haney. Trent?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I never had a Facebook account until 2015, and last year, I started reaching out to members of the community. I tried to grow my online presence, because I wanted to get to know people. And I'm up to about 600 community members are with me on my Facebook, and I'm really happy about that. And I have never deleted anything that I've posted online. And I'm happy with everything I've posted. Sometimes, people want to challenge you, and they want to get in and mix it up, and they use some inflammatory language. And I choose not to participate in inflammatory language. I choose not to do that. But I do take positions, and I have stated things that I believe in. But nothing that I post, even remotely, that I can think of would be in the, I think, what you're referring to as something really divisive. I try to bring people together. I've always been a person, my entire life, that's been able to get people to kind of play nice with each other, even if we're on a different page. Okay? I played sports, athletics, sports my whole life. I put myself through school playing football. By senior year, I was one of the captains of the team, and I had to get the team together on the same page. And I feel the same way about that now on Facebook. I'm trying to be a positive influence.
Trent, you can summarize.
And that's where I'm at with it. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete.
Thank you. As far as Facebook goes, my wife says, "You got to get on Facebook." I have a flip phone, so it's pretty hard to be on Facebook. And the work I do, I don't really have time. But I've been involved in this community for over 35 years, and I've met a lot of people. What I've always felt I've been able to do is bring consensus back to a group, as we did one time on Upper Pier Avenue. We weren't going anywhere, and I, we decided, I said, "Here's what we have to do." We got agreement, and a lot of times, up here on this DS, you don't get what you want, I don't get what I want. But if I can bring consensus together to where we can move the city forward, that's what I'm about. There's a lot of things that go on in the community that I think people get on those accounts and just try to stir the pot and see what kind of really trouble they can create, and I'm not for that. I'm about Hermosa Beach. I've always said, and a lot of people say, "You're the heart of Hermosa," and I feel that, and I wear that badge with honor. And this has been my home. I've grown up here in the South Bay.
You can summarize.
And I think we all need to be able to sit down and get along, and especially up here on the DS, and create some atmosphere that you will want to come down and participate in these meetings. And I feel that's one thing I have a strong point in to do, is to try to get cohesiveness with the council to move this city forward. We have a lot of things to do, and we're not going to get it by not coming together. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Stacy?
Thank you. Thanks, Sam, for the question. Would you be proud of what I have online? And I would say yes. And most of the things that I would post on social media are either to inform or educate our residents on upcoming current events or issues, or to answer or clarify resident concerns. Peripherally, anything else I post on social media is likely advocating for the health of my youngest child, so that's basically the parameters of my social media time. Should you base your vote on what I post online? Well, sure, I'm completely fine for someone to decide if they'll vote for me or not based on what I post on social media. You know, we should be civil as a community, and I think there are a few outliers in our community, and that's okay. They're entitled to their opinion, and I may not choose to advocate in that way. But I would say that the majority of our residents are really incredible people and very civil. And thank you for your question.
Thanks, Stacy. Matt?
Thank you. I think it's an excellent question. I do post a lot on social media as far as some of our groups, for our local groups within the community. My own personal page, I don't post a lot. I am very respectful to the people that I post on. I think it's important that we have a free exchange of ideas. Do not approve of other people when they make personal attacks, but I think it's actually very healthy to have a strong, vigorous debate about the topics. As far as actually the personal attacks, I can go ahead and relate to this personally. Beach Reporter did an article on me about a year and a half ago about some of the personal attacks that were made on me. Personally, I have to say, again, it doesn't really bother me, but I think when people do that, it only, as you said, it only reflects on their own personal integrity and character.
Thanks, Matt. Mary?
First of all, I would just like to say I would be extremely comfortable with anybody reading anything that I have posted on social media. That said, I think that, and I use it to inform, to clarify, and also to share things that I think are beautiful, funny, interesting about life. Poems, sometimes, a painting another time, et cetera. What I would like to say, though, in answer to your question, is that I'm deeply troubled about what I see sometimes happening online. I serve on the school board, and we have a growing problem and challenge, especially with social media bullying. And everybody's having a problem in schools, everywhere. I think this is something we haven't learned how to manage well as a society. I think that maybe we have less impulse control when we're not face-to-face with people. But it's just deeply troubling and very sad to me to see adults not only attacking one another sometimes on social media, being very crass and rude, and sometimes very vicious, frankly. And I just want to put in a shout-out once again, like I did at a recent documentary, one of our citizens, David Keen, made about this very issue, the impact of social media. And that is just to say, remember, our children are watching us in this. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Okay, that completes that question. Next up, your audience question. And Trent, you'll be first up on this. Okay.
All right. Hello, everybody. Thank you for your commitment. I'm Monique Assan. I'm a member of the Hermosa Beach School Board, and I'm a big believer that families are what make Hermosa Beach great. Families shop and dine locally, they're vigilant neighbors, they participate civically. So I also believe that families move to Hermosa Beach for the school district. For that reason, I'd like to know first what you feel the role of this city is in supporting the Hermosa Beach School District, and if you believe that we are partners in making Hermosa Beach great, then I would love to hear any creative ideas you have for ways that the city and the school district could share resources. Thank you.
Thanks, Trent. You're up.
Well, I'm fully supportive of the reconstruction of our schools, and I'm so glad that we passed the bond to do that, because I believe that that needs to be done. And I'm a little bit dismayed about the recent lawsuits that came up trying to prevent the reconstruction. I think that the town voted. We voted twice. We got it passed. We got the money, and now we're going to rebuild, and I fully support that rebuilding. In terms of sharing or collaboration or sharing services, I mean, perhaps there's some opportunities with some of our athletic fields. For example, Clark Field, we could do some renovations there, and some of the school districts could use that for some recreational activities. That would be one. Two, I think maybe restriping the roads all around the schools, making them more safe, making them more, have lighting there, maybe perhaps widening it a little bit if there's room, or making the sidewalks wider, or something to that effect where the city has control. Because at a large extent, the city and the, you know, the schools, districts are separate, and so we have to find ways in common that we can share, and there's only a few things that we can do. But I'm 100% behind rebuilding the schools, and also the library. I want us
Summarize, Trent.
to make our library into a 21st-century place that can be used. And that doesn't mean we have to tear it down. Okay? The structure can stay the same, but we can gut it and redo it and redo it in quick order.
Thanks, Trent. Pete?
Thank you. I have a long history with the school. My two sons went there. When I first got involved in the city, we were fighting the closures of our school sites, and looking back, I wish, everyone wishes we hadn't sold some of those sites. I also supported the school bond. I thought it was very important that the schools not only upgrade the two current facilities, Hermosa Valley and Hermosa View, but the North School facility reopen. My two sons went there. They walked to school. Hopefully, when their school opens, we'll see more children walking to school, because the traffic hopefully around the other two facilities will be reduced. But as far as what the city can do, I think we do a lot now. I think there's more we can do. I know we share the maintenance of all your, of all the facilities, meaning the fields. There's more we can do. I know we have an agreement with the gymnasium, but I think as we upgrade these schools with the bond money, I think we'll find more uses for the residents of this community and hopefully the city, and I will try to support that and open the schools up to everyone.
Pete, you can summarize.
Because I think, as I've always said, the children are our future, and I want to make sure that that, we're in good hands in this city, and they're going to be protective citizens as my two sons have been, thanks to the education they received in the schools. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Stacy?
Thank you. Thanks, Monique, for the question. I do support our schools. I have my oldest two right now at View. We love being able to walk to school, and we treasure the special teachers and their education that they're getting over at View, and the sense of community, too, that's created education that they're getting over at View, and the sense of community, too, that's created there. As far as partnering with the district, there's lots of opportunities for doing that. There's some that we have, are going through right now. We pay for crossing guards for our schools. We also open up space in our community center. There was an after-school issue when we went to half-day kindergarten, and the STAR program came in, but they had no space to watch working parents, presumably children. And we were able to open up space in our community center for nothing, thankfully, for our district to be able to provide this after-school program. And in fact, recently, we were able to extend those hours to much earlier and much later to accommodate these families' concerns. And I think also, there's an opportunity, as we look to building North School, working with our district on any residents' concerns that come up through that process, offering the ability for us to help where we can, and potentially, working with the district, and possibly a business in town on a, like an electric shuttle or something to help move our kids around town. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Matt?
Thank you. I've said this before, council, multiple occasions, one of my mentors, who works in public administration, told me once, "Every municipality comes down to three things: schools, fire, and police." So I'm a big supporter of our school system. I do not have kids in the school system. I did have a chance, being part of Leadership Hermosa, to visit the schools, to learn about what they're about. The greatest thing that I think I've heard or took away from being there is that the amount, the parents are extremely involved in the school system here, so I think that's really great. I have friends that work for LA Unified who tell me the parents are not engaged, not engaged at all. So I definitely support our schools. And then, I wanna add one last note. Almost every mother I've spoke to in the city, their kids are their top priority. They always tell me that. So it's the safety and education of their kids are top priority. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Mary?
Uh, well, I have an inside view of our school district. It's been my absolute joy and pleasure to serve on the school board over these last almost four years now. We have an outstanding school, public school district, and it is a gem for Hermosa Beach. We do have families, I've talked to many of them, who moved here because of the, of the outstanding schools. That said, I think that we don't have as high of a rate of current residents sometimes in our city that have children attending the schools. We do have a lot of renters in town, and maybe young professionals haven't started families. So the challenge is, is to always to educate our, our, our community about the valuable asset that the school district is. The play, I would like to really acknowledge, a perfect opportunity to acknowledge the city for outstanding partnership with the school district, since I've been around and witnessing. They are, they are giving us access to the, what used to be a school at South Park is now a, a city park. There's an old couple of buildings, and we're so overloaded and overcrowded that they're letting our superintendent and her staff kind of bunk there for next to nothing over these last few years and, and a few more. So we will intersect very much with the city in partnership about all this, the traffic issues related to, we have, school district has no control over any streets in the city. We want to improve, we want to improve the flow of traffic and, and help mitigate it just as much as we can, and we know the city's ready to help us with that. I think there's a lot we can do to overcome and mitigate whatever the, the traffic challenges might be.
Thanks, Mary. Haney?
Thanks, Monique, for the question, and I just wanna give a quick shout-out to Monique for being here, and thank you for your service to the school board as well. Monique is the one that helped me put together the Community First Meetings about two years ago, and she helped me through that process for over a year. And then Morgan Sliff took over, who was also here, so thank you both for that help and for your contribution to the community. The connection between the city and the, and the schools is obviously very important. We do have a subcommittee, which I'm not a part of, that helps with the school board, but I'll tell you, based on my involvement in the, in the city council, the school, the city council has, I personally supported Measure S. I actually walked and knocked on doors for it, and I actually have my, my water bottle here that says, "Yes, on Measure S," I think made the news and became a famous water bottle, 'cause people didn't like it, sitting here during council meetings, and I'm really proud that we're able to pass that, and the city council's still continuing to work with the school board and on implementation issues. The city has also provided the office building in South Park for the school district at a rental of a dollar a year. Also provided rental in the community center for the after-school program for also a dollar a year. Also provides the, the crossing guards and any, any law enforcement that the school board asks for. And then on interaction with the school board, I have two things, and they're actually suggestions that, that I've explored. One is, I've made a recommendation to our city manager and our city attorney to evaluate the city intervening with the existing litigation with the school board. I looked at the complaint, and I feel that litigation pertains primarily to the community center. The community center happens to be a city property, and I think it would be the service for the city to remain silent on that litigation while it's proceeding without having a voice. So that's gonna be, that was my suggestion to the city manager and the city attorney, so.
Summarize.
Okay. And then the last thing, this is back to the school board, I would like to work with the school board, and I passed this on to Patas Conde already, to facilitate using the North School parking lot for parking, for improved, for events that are going on in Valley Park. A lot of times, Valley Park has events that have hundreds of people there, and people look at the North School parking lot and being locked, and says, "Well, can the, can the city and the school work together on that?" And I think we should, and we can. So this can be one of my suggestions that I propose to Patas Conde. Hopefully, we'll work with her on that.
Thanks, Haney. Okay, that completes that question. Next audience question? Hey, George?
Good evening, candidates, and I wanna say thank you to all of you for your commitment to run for city council, to help make Hermosa even a better little beach city. And thank you, Al, for putting this together. My concern is public safety, and I know it's a high priority that all of you have. And specifically, this is what I'm concerned about, and I'd like to know what you plan to do about it. The Hermosa Beach City Council has voted to outsource the fire department and will soon vote to outsource the ambulance service. The fire department is going from five paramedics on duty twenty-four-seven to just one paramedic. With the outsourced ambulance service, that number will go to a grand total of two paramedics on duty twenty-four-seven for twenty thousand residents. This is an eighty percent reduction to our fire department paramedic staff that we currently have, but if you include the ambulance contractor, a sixty percent reduction by utilizing two different contractors. Now, that's a significant decrease in service. Most calls for service are emergency medical services related, as we have very few working fires. This is a national trend. What would you do to increase the service level to at least what Hermosa used to have?
Thanks, George. Pete, you're next up.
Okay, thank you. I have to disagree with, with the figures that the Mr. Barks just brought up, but I was on the Fire Advisory Committee that recommended to the council that we go with Los Angeles County, which is a worldwide-known organization. In fact, they're down in Mexico and other cities, helping rescue people as we speak. I don't believe that the call to service for emergencies is going to decrease in any way, shape, or form. In fact, I think it will increase, because currently, a lot of times, when we have a call to service, our engine's over in El Segundo, or another city, 'cause we do auto aid and mutual aid with our two neighboring cities, Redondo and Manhattan. And the county will have an engine company here, and if that engine company is more than thirty minutes out of the station here, they will roll another unit in there to backfill that, so we have continuous coverage. The ambulance service, one reason that it gets so expensive is what we call wall time, when our firefighters go to the hospital, they're not allowed to leave until they can get their gurney back, so they've spent a tremendous amount of wall time there.
You can summarize.
And now with the county, they have a different system, which will relieve our firefighters to come back to the, back to Hermosa, and the contract ambulance will be there with the gurney until they are relieved by the hospital. So I think we're gonna see a vast improvement of, of services with the county, because they do have the resources. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Stacy?
All right. Thank you, George, for the question. We, the, the question is, how will we get back the level of service that we had? And I'll remind you that we had our resident committee look at this. They held multiple public meetings on this issue, and I would say the majority of them went into it not wanting to outsource our fire department, because we didn't have all the facts. And I'd say, most of our community probably felt that way, but they came back to us and unanimously recommended that we outsource to the LA County Fire. Our EPAC unanimously recommended it, our fire department unanimously recommended it, and our council unanimously approved it. It's going to be an increased level of service for our community, otherwise you wouldn't have had all of those groups agree on this issue. And I truly believe we will have unparalleled service, like we've never seen in Hermosa, for fire service and ambulance service. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Matt?
Thank you, Al. As Stacy had mentioned, I also was on the Emergency Paramedics Commission, and we all voted unanimously to go with LA County Fire. My decision was a little bit different than what the mainstream decision was, but basically, I agree with you that we were having five, we do have five paramedics, and now we're going down to one. But the situation should be a wake-up call for the community that we need a public safety a higher priority. We let our fire service get to a point where we could no longer successfully recruit firefighters, firefighter paramedics to come here. I don't think we ever really had a choice between trying to save our fire department and go with LA County. I think the decision was pretty obvious that we had to go with LA County. As far as LA County, I have many friends that work with LA County. They're a world-class organization. I can't say enough good things about them, but you have to understand, there was at one point that we were actually having, I believe it was McCormick or Gerber was coming in here subsidizing our firefighter paramedics, because these guys had been overworked, and they needed time off. So at the end, I completely support this a hundred percent.
Thanks, Matt. Mary?
While I was not directly on the inside of this process, certainly, I'd say, without any exception, everybody that I have heard from and spoken with was in support of this move. So in the sake, sake of expediency, I think, I won't add to what's been said, but I, I will say, I think it's unfortunate that there might be a perception that our service was down, and we'll go down, or needs to be replaced, when, when we're not there yet. Now, certainly, this, this new contract will need to be managed, and will need to be evaluated closely. I'm sure that there's every intention of doing that, but I know that when I sat through the orientation for city council election, that the fire chief himself sat there and said, "This is going to be so good for us." So that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Mary. You know what? We're gonna take a ten-minute recess, and we got two more city council candidates who'll answer this question, and then any questions after the recess, we'll answer those questions. So ten-minute recess.
What, yeah, or, Haney gonna go and Migo on this question? Yeah? Okay.
After we come back. Can we get the video back on? We have two more people answering this question, and that will be Haney and Trent, and then at the end of that question, we'll take a ten-minute recess. So, Haney?
Thank you, Al. Just for the record, I would have been just as happy to answer it after the break. My answer would not have changed. I would, I probably would have cheated for somebody if I took a break. The break would have been nice, but, so, on that question, I think, thank you, George, for the question, and we've heard you speak a lot about the fire services, and you have a lot of experience in it, which I appreciate. However, as Pete Tucker mentioned, I disagree with you on the facts. I have attended, obviously, meetings where our fire chief has addressed this issue, and I've actually spoken to him as recently as today about this issue. And his explanation is contrary to what you just said, is that with the LA County Fire Department, we will have one paramedic on the engine, we will have two paramedics on the rescue, and we will have two emergency medical technicians on the engine. That's five people that have medical training. They're not all paramedics, but you have three paramedics and two emergency medical technicians on the engine. How much experience do you need for somebody like, you know, to, if somebody has a medical emergency? I think that's pretty much handled. The other thing that he also mentioned is that LA County, as we all know, has thousands of paramedics working around the clock in various areas, including cities that are close to us here. So if our unit is, is away, it could either be replaced immediately, or we'll have other resources available. He provided, again, several presentations to the council, I think some of them you've attended and spoken to. We also have, from our community, Citizens Group, who all supported the transition. We have our firefighters themselves that all unanimously supported the transition. I think it's the right thing to do. On the ambulance, just so I'm, I'm being totally transparent, I voted against contracting out the ambulance service, 'cause my preference would have been that the city retained that, so that the, the city retained more control, because I have a feeling that the ambulance services has been monopolized. There's really only one company in the South Bay now can probably do this work, and bidding that out is not really a good option when you bid somebody out when they know that they're the only ones that can do it. So my preference would have been to maintain that locally, but I was on the, on the one-to-four position, so we will contract this out.
Summarize, Haney.
And hopefully, when that service is contracted out, in conjunction with the LA County Fire, we will get better service than we're getting today.
Thanks, Haney. Trent?
This is one of these subjects that really gets me, my blood boiling, so to speak, because it is, this is something that definitely we took our eye off the ball. We did not put Hermosa first by letting the fire department go. Now, it could, it is that it got in such bad shape that we probably had to do it, but think about it. Our firehouse was condemned. What kind of a fire chief lets his building be condemned when he's there every day? Honestly, we let this go. We did not put Hermosa Beach first. And now, we're gonna put the residents at risk, because we have to go to the county. Now, this is not saying the county people are not good people, and they're not good fire department people. They are. They're fine people. And I'm sure they're gonna try their hardest to do a great job. I am confident of that. And hopefully, we get to rebuild our firehouse so that we can use it. But what I am dismayed about is that it's a central service to the city, ambulatory care, responding to emergencies, and we let it get to a point where it was not working anymore. Our people were overworked. They say, "Well, the people were overworked. We didn't have the money. We couldn't do this." Well, that's just not acceptable to me as an excuse for twenty years over and over and over again. Nobody I know in private sector would have let that happen, for that long a time. They would have made changes quicker. And so I believe that it's something that we should take a lesson from and learn from.
Okay, we'll be going to a ten-minute recess and then finish the debate after that.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, can you take your seat? Thank you, sir.
And you completed that audience question? We completed that audience question, so we'll be starting back up again? And, yeah, no, no, we're gonna take questions. Who's next up, or who's next in line? We only do this every couple of years, so.
That's right. Thank you for your fortitude, and we appreciate the time and effort that you put into all of these, this time and, and activities and events. Let me get to my question, please. Okay, "There are those openly admitting an effort to transform to a different economic system than the free-market system, and a further effort to delegitimize our constitution. Do you believe and support the Constitution, the root of our American society, and the free-market system? Please explain." And as I'm getting some heckles and different things in the back, that makes it even more important for me to hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy. Stacy?
Thank you for the question, Tracy. I, I mean, I'll keep it short. Do I believe in the Constitution and the free-market system? Sure. Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Matt?
Thank you, Stacy. Yes, I absolutely do. I think I've mentioned free market several times already in this debate. I've taken an oath to support and defend the I've taken an oath to support and defend the constitution for the city, also for this country. Reason why the constitution is so important to me is, most constitutions throughout the world are constitutions in which the government tells you what your rights are. Our constitution tells us, our constitution is about what we tell the government what they can do. So, that's why, that's so important to me. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Mary?
Yeah, I mean, thank you for the easy question. I absolutely support and believe in our constitution and the free market system. In fact, you know, I've been sometimes a little bit troubled recently about, you know, any threats to that whatsoever, so count me in. I'm a supporter.
Thanks, Mary. Haney?
I was kind of tempted to throw in something about me being communist, and get some laughter, but I decided against it. I'm just going straight with a quick answer. I definitely support the constitution and the free market system, based on my legal experience for the last 20 years, obviously, have dealt with on the legal issue with challenges to the constitution, so I'm obviously familiar with these issues, and definitely support our constitution.
Thanks, Haney. Trent?
The constitution, to me, is the greatest document ever written, because it guarantees our freedom. And I believe that wholeheartedly, and this is the greatest country in the world, and has been since its inception. We have done more since our country was founded than any other country in the history of their existence. And that is not by accident. It is because of our God-given inalienable rights that are guaranteed in our constitution. And I am so supportive of that. Earlier, the question was asked about Facebook and comments and things, and I just like to say, that one of the things that I do on my Facebook page is I publish letters that I write. And one I wrote recently, and I published this Sunday again, because of what I saw going on regarding the whole NFL controversy, was I published a letter called Individual Determination. And it's about 1,000 words. And I would encourage anybody who wants to read it, to go to my Facebook page and read Individual Determination, it has a picture of Marine Corps there in front of it, and talks about our guaranteed liberties, and protecting the rights of the individual. And the individual is the gold standard by which we measure this country, and to protect those freedoms, and to nourish the individual's right to get ahead, and to make it for themselves. Thank you.
Thanks, Trent. Pete?
Yes, I do strongly believe in the constitution, and I want to thank all the military who have fought to continue so we have those freedoms that we all enjoy. And free market, yes, I support all of that, so I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we completed that question. Anybody else for a question?
First of all, candidates, anybody that gives their time for public service, I admire, so, thank you all. My question is related to downtown, so let me give you a really quick history here. A couple of years ago, the Roma report, downtown core revitalization plan, said we were losing about $200,000 to $300,000 a year, and the city council read the report, I think basically threw it in the trash, didn't do anything. And I think then the following summer, or the next year, the chief of police told us, "Boy, we need to get downtown in control, so we're going to drop 160K on cameras, and this is really going to help the problem." The last planning commission, 13 assaults, one stabbing, and the loss of two injured police officers. Less than two months ago, the chief told us, she's never, or the department's never issued a ticket for over-serving. Now, you're going to start to see, all this is water and oil, preservation of what comes first, and public safety, and putting this versus, this doesn't all make sense.
Your question?
Okay. Then, we subsidized, just less than a week or so ago, $65,000 to patrol, with our taxpayers' money, citizens here, the alleys and streets around the downtown. It doesn't stop. And now, staff wants to put up dining on Upper Pier. Okay, safe place, public first, not so. So, here's the question. The current council has failed to enforce the downtown issue and its law enforcement. Question number one, would you change the dangerous and losing deal that we have by enforcing our code to have bona fide restaurant enforcement? Two, by enforcing strict 50-50 rules on all restaurants serving alcohol, and vote against Upper Pier for more outdoor dining? Thank you.
Thanks, Sandy. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Seaman. As far as your question on the 50-50, I'll start with there first. I do not support 50-50 as a uniform for all the restaurants, every restaurant is different. I know this is something, this is a topic that's come up in the past many, many, many times. What is the intent of 50-50? And it's obviously to reduce over-serving. So, I would focus more on over-serving, these are the issues. We're going to go over this in more detail, but just to blanket alcohol consumption, and not taking effect to age, and also socioeconomics, and the amount of alcohol that's consumed very cheaply versus somebody who would go into a high-end restaurant and order more alcohol that's more expensive. The 50-50 just doesn't apply there at all. But I think that the bigger issue is not so much...
You do know 50-50 is arbitrary enforcement?
Let him answer.
Okay.
Yes, I do. My issue for the downtown area, we're going to go over this, is more, is the criminal enforcement, that we have a criminal element in the downtown area. These people come in here and overconsume, rather than, I think, being over-served, but I think we definitely have to go after the criminal element in the downtown area.
Thanks, Matt. Mary?
This is, we are going to have some questions coming up, right in this lane as well, about downtown and the challenges down there. They persist, you know, in preparing for a run for city council, and really immersing myself more in this. I went on my ride-along, it was eye-opening, for sure. I think that it's a complicated issue without a simple answer, so, you know, I would maybe echo a little bit that it isn't just about a 50-50 situation, or a new restaurant that might serve alcohol anywhere in the city. But I do think that we have, we have a lot of things underway, but it is a slow and tedious, it's not an easy fix. So, I am in favor of really tackling this. I mean, one of the thoughts I had, quite frankly, is that, I've lived in Hermosa for 11 years, I think we get used to the problem. And many of us, most of the people I talk with say they don't go downtown after 9:00, 10:00 o'clock on a busy night. And it occurred to me that we're just settled in a little bit around that, and it, being in the position I am now, has me want to think about the broader, long-term solutions to partner with the businesses, so that we together can talk about where we want our economies to grow. We don't control everything, but we can partner, and we can create a vision, and I do think we have to pretty aggressively deal with the crime elements down there. It's not okay in Hermosa Beach to have some of the highest crime rates in comparable cities, and, you know, we need to keep our environment safe for our residents.
Thanks, Mary. Haney?
So, I've gone through some ride-alongs of the police department as well, and I know how tough it is for them to deal with the issues on a Friday and Saturday night. The ride-alongs I did was from 10:00 o'clock at night to, I think, 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning. And it's an issue that they struggle with, and that's part of the reasons why we have a task force. There's a council subcommittee, consists of Councilman Barmodo and Mayor Massey, that's working with the police department on these issues. And as Councilmember Barmodo mentioned, this will be before the council soon with their recommendations, and I think that's the right approach, to have a big picture. And I'll wait, goes to Councilmember Barmodo, maybe she'll fill us in of who else is on the committee, I'm assuming some businesses are involved in the committee as well. And I think it's, the right answer is to get input from everybody, the council, our police enforcement folks, our businesses, and come up with ways to resolve the issues and address it. I think on the cameras, real briefly, I supported the camera installations, and we've heard from our police chief how these cameras have been successful in legal enforcement and apprehending suspects, so I think this was the right thing to do. They don't solve all the problems, and obviously, they don't prevent any problems, they're intended for their, to apprehend people after unfortunately something happens, but I think they're the right thing to do, and I think they are serving our law enforcement folks. Thank you.
Thanks, Haney. Trent?
Yes, I'm very concerned with public safety in and around the pier area, especially on the weekends at night. I think that's when the bulk of our problems occur, and/or maybe on some holiday weekends. I think the cameras in and around the pier area were a smart thing to do. I think technology like that will help us go a long way. I'm also in favor, on Saturday nights, weekend nights, to have a cruiser parked on the pier, a police cruiser, and so we have a presence there. I think it's, the establishment owners have been very, are listening to this issue to the public. I think they're trying to avoid things like over-serving, and people, after all, it is the people who cause the problem. It is their fault, ultimately, the people who cause the problem. So, looking at over-serving people and working with the bar owners is really important. I think having a stronger police presence down there is important. I think if somebody is out of line, that we should arrest them, and I think that will go a long way.
You can summarize.
And so, I'm very open to public safety down and around the pier.
Thanks, Trent. Pete?
Thank you. In regards to outdoor dining in an Upper Pier, it's not allowed by the code, that was one thing that, when we developed that project, that the public said, "We do not want outdoor dining on the public way," and as we have seen, all those restaurants that have come in have their dining on their property. So, I think, and hopefully, that'll happen on Hermosa Avenue, but what we really need is a better mix of retail and rest, and also the restaurants, we seem to be losing retail due to the high prices of rent down there, because for us, we know that the restaurants can make that really through the alcohol sales, so we need to somehow look at that. The 50-50 has been around, we've gone back and forth on that. It's interesting that, I guess a few months ago, the planning commission reviewed all the CUPs and found that there are no violations down there. And really, if you really read the CUPs, they're really more interior of how the businesses run, doors closed, and things like that, and most, a lot of the problems are really outside. And I think what happens is, and I've lived here my whole life, and what we really have here is what we call, I call the beach culture, and we've always been known as a party city. And now, what most people do is about 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night, there's someone's home, and they get what I call, and I'll address this later with some of the questions, they come down here pre-primed, and it only takes maybe one more drink to set them off, and then we have problems.
You can have to summarize, Pete.
So, I think everything's on the table, the players are doing what they can, but I think we need to be a little more strict on how we cite people. I think sometimes we've been too nice to people when we address them, but I think this is a matter that continually goes on, and somehow, we need to find an end to it. So, hopefully, we can find something that brings families back down there.
Thanks, Pete. Stacy?
Thanks for the question, Sandy. I think many of us share some of your concerns, and I think you're going to hear it through the next bunch of questions and our answers. Right now, we're working on this comprehensive plan, and I am part of that subcommittee. That's going to include the aesthetics, the cleanliness, safety, and getting our arms around the crime that's happening in the downtown, late night, and on the weekends. 50-50 is a tool, but I'm really looking forward to presenting this plan to council and our community, receiving feedback, and then working on tying up the loose ends on that plan. That's literally happening within the next bunch of weeks, so hopefully, you're in town, and you can remain part of that conversation. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Any more audience questions? Yep, come on up. Thanks. Mary, you'll be next up. No, actually, yeah, Mary.
Joe Verbergi, 1519, Bonnie Bray, Hermosa East. My question's about community choice aggregation, CCA. Considering that the two remaining council members are very in favor of having CCA in Hermosa Beach, and it's going to be very likely that you all be voting on a CCA in our, in our community during your term. So, given the unknown nature of the costs associated with the CCA, unknown costs associated with terminating a CCA if we decide we don't want to be in it, the unknown costs associated with power charge, differential adjustments, and many other things that are unestablished in the energy, energy market, I think that, I think that gets a lot of people, especially on fixed incomes, concerned in this, in this community. So, my question, considering the complicated nature of energy policy, is what are your qualifications as a council member to make a decision on CCAs in our community?
Thanks. Mary?
Okay, thank you. Interesting question. I'm a little bit newer to community choice aggregation conversation, but I have been doing some reading up on that, and I'll tell you what I know. I'm not an expert, I'm not an authority, I would need to school up, just like I have to do on school board when it's, there's something that I am not innately familiar with. The little bit that I do know echoes what you have shared, which is that it's a very complicated equation, and, I guess, opportunity for a community potentially, but perhaps Hermosa is not ideal for such a thing. I don't know that to be true or not true just yet, but I know that size has something to do with how successful it could be, and, and so, you know, what I'll simply say is that if it ever comes up before a council that I am sitting on, that it would have to be taken to complete task, like every other thing that comes before this body. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Haney?
Thank you. So, the question is the qualifications as a council member to run CCA. I don't think that's different than anything else that we rule on. We are not experts in a lot of issues that come before us. That's why we have significant staff, and sometimes, we have to go outside of our staff and go to consultants, and we also consult with other elected officials or other similar cities or entities that are in the same position. So, my involvement in the last four years has been, I'm an engineer by background, so I can understand some engineering aspects of things, but a lot of the stuff about CCA is something that I'm learning. So, I attended several meetings that our staff, this process started in 2013, so it's been going on for a while. I attended several meetings that our staff has put together, either by themselves or through consultants, to give us information about CCA. I got in a bus with a few people here in this room, and went to Lancaster, and sat through an all-day event with Lancaster's staff and mayor, to learn about how, what they're doing about CCA, and learn how that's impacting their city. Also, I serve as a city's delegate to the South Bay Council of Governments, which is 15 cities, 15 South Bay cities that meet once a month in Torrance, and we had a member from Los Angeles County that's dealing with the CCA with Los Angeles County come and give us a presentation about what LA County is doing.
Summarize.
So, that's, I guess, my qualifications over the last three years, what I've learned about CCA going forward. In order for us to make a decision about where we go with CCA, we're going to have to look at all the issues that you've raised, where the numbers are, what the risks are, where the financial issues are, and we don't have those yet. All we've expressed as a city is our interest to look into it and evaluate it. LA County's looking into it and evaluating it, several other cities are looking into and evaluating, and the last thing I'll mention, because I think it's been out there, the concern that the city of Hermosa Beach is going to become a utility and going to run our own power company, that's not what CCA is, that's not what any of us have supported, that's not what any of us can look into. What we're going to be looking into, whether or not the city of Hermosa Beach, in conjunction with a bunch of other cities in the South Bay, or with LA County, would make sense for us to evaluate going into CCA, and based on what I know about it today, the expectation is the rates would be less, and the power would be more renewable than what we currently get from Edison. And if that's the case, if the rates are less and the powers are renewable, I would likely to be supporting it.
Thanks, Haney. Trent?
I don't think we should be entertaining the thought of joining a CCA, and the reason being is because I think it's outside of the scope of our expertise and what we should be doing as a city with our time, effort, and energy. We should be focused on things that benefit Hermosa, that are usable, visible, and tangible. Now, the state of California leads the world in moving to renewables, and the state of California has mandated that the purchase of renewable power will be 50% and beyond moving forward, and we will benefit from that as consumers of electricity. I believe the CCA, while it was created some years ago, had some good intentions, is going to die on the vine. It's because the state has taken control, and the producers of the energy are now selling the energy through the grid, through the power utility companies, and that's a more efficient model than having all of the cities try to combine and do something different, and have consultants paid, and get special things and people, and it's really just a boondoggle. We should not be focusing on that. We should be focusing on fixing our sewers, our roads, our sidewalks, our streets, our greenbelt, our parks, our buildings, and other things versus this thing that is kind of intangible. of intangible.
Can you summarize?
Thank you.
Thanks, Brett. That was not something. Pete?
Thank you. You asked about qualifications. I've been certified as a green, in the Green Code and the Title 24 Energy Codes that have been mandated by the state of California that I am obligated to enforce in my employment. I've seen a lot of changes in the industry. We see more and more energy-efficient appliances. Every time you buy an appliance, as I said earlier, with that little star on the bottom, you're helping. But when it gets down to, what we have to do is we're going to have to spend to join this, this group, and I think the money could be better spent here. As we've heard, and as you read, the state has mandated clean energy by 2030 or 2040, somewhere in there. And I don't feel that the city or even this community choice aggregation group really is needed. People are putting solar panels on their homes, really to get out of Tier 3 of the Edison, but at the same time, we're generating more electricity than we can use in this state with solar panels, and the state is now currently selling, making, paying other states to take our power because we have no place for it.
Pete, you can summarize.
The regulators are saying we're still going to need gas-fired, natural gas plants for at night because we don't have enough battery energy to, to place the power to store. But all in all, I think what I have told people is thank goodness government is so slow in adopting something because the private sector has outpaced what this originally intended to be. And I feel that the city can concentrate its efforts on repairing our infrastructure and helping items in the city here that need to be fixed.
Thanks, Pete. Stacy?
Thanks for the question on CCA, Joe. Gives us an opportunity to talk about it. We haven't talked as a council or a community on this topic for months. The last discussions we had, we were examining what Lancaster is doing and what they believe is rather successful for their community and innovative and financially responsible in their opinion. That model, in my opinion, was likely too high risk for a community our size and of our budget. So as far as I'm concerned, to form our own CCA or maybe partner with one or two cities, I haven't seen information that would make me feel confident that that would work for us. The other viable option that's out there is to partner with LA County. Again, we have received, this community, this council, almost no information on that. Some cities have joined LA County, and we have told them that we had an intent to potentially partner with them on that. But without this information to let us know if we're making a good decision or not, I wouldn't feel comfortable moving forward. But I do think that if we had more information, if we had more public meetings and much more community input, as far as LA County is concerned, if we met a three-pronged requirement, I'd be interested in looking into it. It'd have to be low or low risk. It would have to improve our quality of life, which would also mean meeting or helping us meet our carbon reduction goals, and it would have to be financially prudent for our municipality and our residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Matt?
Thank you, Joe. Excellent question. I don't think there's any doubt, people know that I've been speaking about this for about a year now, year and a half, that I strongly oppose CCA. I believe it's just part of the continuous political agenda to go ahead and for our carbon neutrality goals and rebrand this as the Green Idea City. As far as how I'm qualified, I do, I do know that an electron produced by a solar panel in Lancaster will never make it to the city here in Hermosa Beach. So I believe that this is just a glorified carbon asset scheme. You know, there's not, there's something called fungibility, and there's something called fungibility, where an electron produced from a solar panel is not the same as an electron produced from, from an electric company. So that's my opinion. Obviously, we have a difference of opinion on this from, from the cat calls here in the audience, but that's just, that's just the way it is. But the marketing promotion material that comes out says that we're buying and acquiring renewable energy and we're putting it on the grid, and it's going to be delivered to your home. That's not true. It is put onto the grid. That is it. That's, that's my answer. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Any audience questions? Looks like this is the last one.
Last one, I think. Okay. Great. Thank you, Al, for doing this. I have a number of questions, but it's late, and there aren't many of us left. So this will be an easy one. In a minute or less, hopefully less, without using the expression, "I want to give something back to my community," off the table, why do any of you want to serve on the city council?
Okay. Haney, you're up.
I think I want to serve on the city council because I want to make sure the decisions that are made at the council level are good, frankly, from a selfish standpoint, for me and my family going forward. We built our house here almost 10 years ago, and when our kids, when we moved in and our kids got into their rooms, my wife and I kind of half-seriously, half-jokingly tell them, "Get really comfortable in your rooms because you're going to be here until you go to college, because we're not going anywhere." So the, for a place that I've chosen, my wife and I have chosen to be in for the rest of our lives, it's important to me that the decisions that are made are good for the quality of life for me and my family, and hopefully the rest of my neighbors in my community as well.
Thanks, Haney. Trent?
I really have a two-pronged reason for serving. The first one was that I wanted to make sure that we were spending our tax dollars on Hermosa Beach, and what I saw was not the case. So I came to the table thinking that I would drive council and our will to spending money on Hermosa Beach and focus on the things that are visible and usable and make our lives better. And, and the word I use for that is betterment. I want to make Hermosa Beach better and, and buy things for the betterment. The other reason is, is for me personally, you know, I call on the who's who of LA as a daily job, and now I'm in the public sector. I work for Office Depot in the public sector. So there's synergies with me calling on the public sector and also serving in the public sector. So it helps me help myself, and so it's a win-win-win all the way around for Hermosa Beach to put me on this council.
Thanks, Trent. Pete?
Thank you. My involvement with the city really started years ago with Hermosa Beach Little League, and I didn't like what was going on there, so I volunteered my time, ended up being the president, and I really blame my two boys for my involvement with the city. But the reason I serve is because I think I bring a common sense approach to solving problems and bringing people together to improve the quality of life in our city, which I love. And I believe that by getting things done and making this city better, our small-town atmosphere is better. We have award-winning schools that are great, but we all need to work together, and I feel that I have those traits to bring people together to make this city a better place to live. That's why I volunteer. I really consider this a volunteer job. It's not, not for the money, it's just to make the city better.
Thanks, Pete. Stacy?
Thanks for the question. I have a couple reasons why I decided to run again. We have a lot of projects in motion right now that I would like to see through, and I would like to make sure that there is adequate community input on these projects. It's our downtown, it's improving our community and municipal buildings, and it's seen through the transition properly with our LA County Fire Services. I also love this community. It's a place where you run into your neighbors everywhere you go, and I truly believe we all care for each other here. And finally, I, I really like to protect our biggest assets, our beach and ocean and our open space. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Matt?
All right. I'll keep, I'll keep my question, my ask, excuse me, my answer very simple. I agree with what everyone has said, but I think what differentiate, why I really want to do this, where I felt it was a call, called to duty, is I felt after the general plan, I felt that our individual liberties were being threatened, our property rights were being threatened, and I didn't like the direction that the government was taking our city in. I think there's some people who want to plan other people's lives rather than let them plan them themselves, and that's, that's probably the most important thing to me, and that's why I'm here.
Thanks, Matt. Mary?
Thank you for the question. I really like it, and because we're going late and I probably, nobody will be here by my closing statement, I'm going to borrow a little bit from my closing statement because it perfectly speaks to, to your question, sir. So I, I feel that there are few things more important than the conversation that we're having here tonight. Why do I feel that way? I feel that way because this is our home. This is where we live our lives, this is where we make our memories, and for some, this is where we make our living. So for me, the governance of our community is an absolute and sacred trust, especially in Hermosa Beach. We live in one of the most desirable places on earth. We have this precious, beautiful coastal community, which, which we must work diligently together to sustain well, well into the future. And we have so many passionate, smart, talented, committed people in Hermosa Beach, and we all love and feel very protective of her, and I did call her her, so. But just one example, and I'm glad that Claudia Berman's here, there's a great group in Hermosa called Thrive Hermosa, with no bravado, with no fanfare. They have assembled quietly in a grassroots fashion, but very powerfully as well, just to make positive change rather than to just complain. So last step.
You can summarize.
Let's all agree that in Hermosa Beach, we start with one of the best hands dealt that there could possibly be, and I'm here to help make sure that the way we grow forward is in the interests of the future of this community. Thank you.
Thank you for your answer. For the record, Greg Stranges, 2104 Circle Drive. Have a good evening.
Great, thanks. Great question. Okay, we're going to go on to our final questions, and I think we can breeze through them pretty quickly.
We got one more.
Oh, another question? No? Okay, Robert.
If you don't mind, I know it's late, and I certainly don't want to take it. Well, first of all, thank you all for your service and your offer of service. I sincerely appreciate everything that all of you are doing. And it's certainly too late to get into a question about misinformation in regards to carbon neutrality, so we certainly won't go there. But what we do have to address, because this is a beach town and everybody understands the importance of the ocean and the quality of the water, and, you know, specifically for what's about to happen, there's a proposed desalination plant. And what's happening now is that all of you are going to have an influence on that plant. And so I'd really like to know how you would vote, support or not support, a desalination plant that's going to be highly energy-intensive. And Hyperion Plant already puts into the bay 200 million gallons of water per day that is fresh water that could be recycled and could be used. Also, our storm water that goes into the ocean, that all of you know, makes it absolutely unsafe for surfers to surf after a rain, could be diverted to Hyperion and could be used as fresh water, drinking processed and, and processed as fresh drinking water by Hyperion without a desalination plant, which also has toxicity associated with the desalination process. So I would like to know how it is that you would vote on a desalination plant. Thank you.
Okay. All right, and next up would be Trent.
Okay, I've written three or four articles on the desalinization plants. That's proposed, okay? So, and I'm not even sure we would have a vote on this, but, but let's just say we do. The desalinization plant that Robert's talking about would be located in the middle of the oil farm in El Segundo, right behind the power plant. And desalinization plants are popping up all over the world, and that technology is moving ahead at warp speed. They are safe and they are effective. And we are not in a drought situation now, so West Basin Water District may not continue forward with the idea of floating the desalinization plant, but when we were in a drought, they did float it, and I thought it's a good idea to look at it because we make things better through technology. For example, our ocean out here is getting cleaner and cleaner and cleaner every day because we rebuilt Hyperion, we redid our storm drains, we put in regulations to prevent stuff from going in the ocean, and it's crystal clear now. It really is. The sea life is back. So the idea that we can't make something like fresh water from the ocean, to me, is just not practical. I believe that we can do it. I believe in this country. We have landed satellites on asteroids. We can make desalination water. So I definitely think that we can do good with our technology and we can make it beneficial for everybody.
Thanks, Trent. Pete?
Thank you. The desalinization plant is something that's, I guess, coming to a head since Robert brought it up. I'm a little surprised that they're going to have a desal plant and the water's going to go right back into the Hyperion Plant. I find that rather interesting because the Hyperion Plant takes their water over to El Segundo with West Basin, and it's clean there and recycled. So why do they need to do this? I'm, I'm not sure. It doesn't make any sense to me. And I bring up the West Basin and even LA County sanitation because we still dump millions of gallons of treated water back into the ocean that could be used for irrigation and other systems in our homes. But due to the fact that there's not enough demand, these two agencies refuse to bring in the interstructure, which means the main pipes, so we can tap off of that for usage in our homes. I've been a champion in advocating for infiltration projects. One is underneath Upper Pier. I championed that project, and we got an EPA grant to build that at no cost to the city, and we also got an award for that.
You can summarize.
So as far as infiltration goes and keeping the ocean clean, I'm all for that. We need to do more, and we need to educate more people inland. But as far as the desal plant goes, I'm a little miffed at their, their reasoning. It seems that we're already moving the water over and bring it back and use it there with a lot of desal. So those are my answers to that. I, I would need more information, but I think the critical thing is we get the, what we call the purple pipe water down our street so we can use that for irrigation and, and other usages in your home.
You can summarize.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Pete. Stacy?
Thank you for the question. Robert, I'm against desalinization in general and specifically at the location proposed in El Porto, El Segundo. It uses an extreme amount of energy, it compromises our marine life, it pollutes our ocean, and it'd be an eyesore. And I'm actually proud that one of my first votes on this council was a unanimous vote opposing the proposed desal plant in El Porto. And actually, it recently came to my attention that our EPAC Commission had resurfaced that conversation, and it surprised me to an extent because we did take that unanimous vote against it. And it brings to mind that we're going to need better communication between our commissions and our council on these decisions so that we don't cross over each other there. But I'm against the desal plan, and I'm proud to be a part of that decision against it. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Matt?
Thank you, Robert, for the question. I actually did bring this up at our last EPAC meeting as far as if there's an emergency preparedness component to desalination. I strongly support desalination as far as the technology, primarily because my affiliation with the United States Navy, it's a huge technology they use, and it's, it's been beneficial when they've had to go shore, provide fresh, clean water for whoever they need to rescue after a natural disaster. As far as actually having, supporting it in the one in El Segundo, I think it's way too premature. One of the biggest drawbacks with desalination is, is extremely energy-intensive, but as the technology progresses, there, it may be a viable solution in the future, but as of right now, I wouldn't support it. But I want to see if there's an emergency preparedness component to their plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Mary?
While I don't have much expertise in desalination, I know some people who have extreme knowledge and expertise in desalination technology and this project in particular, I would not be voting to support it as it's been currently, maybe, you know, before the community in any way for consideration. And as far as the future down the road and what could happen and what the needs for water would be, it would be a completely different scenario. Thanks.
Thanks, Mary. Haney?
Thanks. So I was also on the council, and we voted unanimously to oppose the desal plant, as this council member Amaro mentioned, and we sent a letter to West Basin, I believe it was June of last year, letting them know, and we actually were following the lead of Manhattan Beach, who similarly had a meeting, and I don't know the numbers, but I believe the council in Manhattan Beach also unanimously opposed the desal plant. We've heard, before we make the decision, we've heard from various entities, including Surf Rider Foundation, Heald the Bay, and other environmental NGOs that were opposed to it. They provided us some valid reasons, including the fact that it costs too much money, it takes too much time. I think that the number I heard exceeds half a billion dollars to build I think that the number I heard exceeds half a billion dollars to build the desal plant, which is obviously a lot of money. I believe the EIR is gonna be available later this year, so we can look into the issues specifically regarding it. But based on the information that we had, we have good reason to oppose it. It also kills marine life. And for the location, it obstructs our coastline and our views. So for all the various reasons that were provided to us, there's no new information to lead me to think that that would be any different, but when the EIR comes out.
Summarize.
So, City of Hermosa Beach has opposed it, where I was part of that decision. And if it comes up again before us for any action, I'm likely to continue to oppose it as well.
Thanks, Haney. Okay, on to the next questions. We're homework-bound here. So I'll breeze through this pretty quickly, and hopefully the candidates can also do that. So the next question has to do with, and by the way, these documents are on this website here, HBNeighborhood.org. And this document is the L.A. County Health Department put out this document in 2011. And it's reducing, the name of the document, Reducing Alcohol-Related Harms in Los Angeles County: A City and Communities' Health Report. So they took 117 cities and communities in all of L.A. County, L.A. County's about 10 million people, and 117, and what they did is they divided it up and looked at certain aspects of alcohol outlets and alcohol outlet density. So for instance, alcohol outlet density for on-sale and off-sale. So on-sale is something like a restaurant or a bar or whatever. That means you consume the alcohol on the site, on the premises. Off-sale is like a liquor store or something. So for 117 cities in the area, so for off-sale alcohol outlet density, we ranked number four. So there are only three cities with more alcohol outlet density in L.A. County. And as a comparison to L.A. County as a whole, we had four times the number of alcohol outlets on a per capita basis for all of L.A. County. Real quickly, there are seven South Bay cities that border the ocean. That's El Segundo, Manhattan, Hermosa, Redondo, Torrance, Rancho Pevy, and hell, it's the states. And within this report, they drew the conclusion of an alcohol outlet density to violent crime. So within those seven cities, we were number one in violent crime. We had double the rate of violent crime compared to Manhattan Beach. I'll read the question. Do you agree with the findings and recommendations in the Reducing Alcohol Harms in Los Angeles County report regarding the relationship of alcohol outlet density to increased violent crime in a city? How many new alcohol outlets should be added in Hermosa Beach? How many existing outlets should be granted later hours than 10:00 p.m. have dancing or serve hard liquor? And that would be for Pete.
Oh, thank you. This is question seven?
Six.
Six. Six, I'm sorry. Okay. As we've heard the findings, we have to agree with them because facts are facts. I feel that any crime should not be tolerated in Hermosa or any other city. The South Bay in general has always had an alcohol problem for a long time. We call it the beach culture, beach party culture. I grew up here, and I have been witness to that, and it's gone on for years. Hermosa's seen strict enforcement during the Fourth of July holidays, which has helped with this problem, but this is only a few days of patrol. Ask our police about the rise in violent crimes, and they will tell you that the early release of prisoners has somewhat contributed to this and probably more than not, more than we care to think. There is no easy answer to this. Hermosa has a great influx of people who come to party, sometimes already intoxicated. I call it pre-prime, as I said earlier. We continue to find ways to reduce these figures, but it's a constant-changing game of an atmosphere every night. We don't know who's coming, what they're on, where they've been. As far as new off-premises, liquor stores and markets, I feel that we do not need to allow any more in the city. New on-premise restaurants, et cetera, in that category, I feel that they should close at 11:00 p.m. Existing outlets closing by 10:00, beer and wine by right should not be granted additional hours. I think we need to take a stand that if we say you have beer and wine by right, I know that now they are allowed to come in and ask for a variance to stay open longer at night.
You can summarize.
But I feel that we need to stop that tradition. And the real question is, how does Hermosa really break the beach culture? Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Stacy?
Thank you. As I've discussed with the chief and law enforcement officers, and as common sense would tell us, there is a connection between alcohol-serving establishments and alcohol consumption and violence. The city council has capped the number of CUPs covering late-night alcohol-serving establishments in Hermosa. Currently, we're capped at 37, but we have 41 in town. So we're still exceeding that number. I see no reason to revisit increasing that cap number at all. Since the discussion about an 11:00 p.m. closing versus the existing 10:00 p.m. closing time for some alcohol-serving establishments is on the future agenda for our planning commission, I really look forward to hearing public comment on that and what our commissioners are going to recommend. We also need to establish and regularly police more safe routes to school for our children. And I would say that that's a higher priority for me than finding ways to increase the number of hours of operation for alcohol-related businesses in town. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Matt?
Thank you. As far as the question, do I believe that there's a direct relation here to violent crime and alcohol density? Yes, I do. There's two aspects of this I want to visit. There's, as Mr. Tucker had mentioned, that we do have people that come here to this city, and we have our local Hermosa crew. We do not separate those crime statistics between local people and people who come visit. I think you would see, you would not see parity there. I think you'd see a big difference. As far as increasing the alcohol density within Hermosa Beach, I think we already have an overflow of, of a type of establishment that really appeals to people in their late twenties. As of tonight, it's 10 o'clock. If I wanted to leave here and go get a drink for myself with a more mature audience, maybe of more high-quality alcohol or wine, I'd be very limited. So as far as saying, I want to go ahead and reduce the number of alcohol outlets in here, I would increase them if it appealed only to high and more established, more mature people in the city.
Thanks, Matt. Mary?
Thank you. I found, I think the findings are very clear, and they speak for themselves about the greater, the density of alcohol outlets, the higher the crime rates and the alcohol-related harms. So I actually learned something from Stacy, maybe. I thought we had 39 liquor licenses, but 41 is what you said, I think. So I know that there's, I've been told there's some interested in reducing that down to at least potentially 35 liquor licenses. I think we need to pay very close attention to the density factor and create realistic goals to reducing it or changing some of the problematic patterns that exist today over time. But there, again, there's no quick fix. We can't undo this overnight, so we need a long-range and very careful approach, which includes partnering more closely with our business owners, who are probably also kind of in a groove around their business model, and they do what they do. And I'm just a very optimistic person about what we can do when we come together and we talk about moving the ball down the road in a way that works for everyone and is a win-win for our community. So, you know, a lot of things being addressed right now, some of which we've talked about throughout the evening, the environmental design and the better lighting, I think that's great. But I just, we'll emphasize, I think it's a parallel approach, something shorter-term, and then coupled with a longer-range planning process where...
You can summarize.
Where, you know, we've got these catalyst, anchor catalyst projects coming in. That might help shift some things. But I think we can do more than that, and I don't think if we come together, we may find ourselves a little stuck in the mud moving forward.
Thanks, Mary. Haney?
So I think that, another of Al's tricky questions about asking us if we agree with conclusions of our report that was prepared several years ago by professionals, that's their job to do this report. So my short answer is yes. I have no reason to doubt the conclusions of the report. It was done by professionals, and I assume that the conclusions are accurate. As a city, we are aware of crimes that result from having too much alcohol in our, you know, bars or downtown area. We get periodic reports from our police department about incidents, including DUI arrests, including other alcohol-related arrests and fights, altercations in our downtown. We have evidence of several fights and altercations, including unfortunately, some of our police officers, which prompted us to go look into this issue a little bit further, and also made the point of us hiring the private security to help us with our management of our downtown. So there's, in my opinion, there's clearly a relationship between alcohol outlet density and increased violent crime in Hermosa Beach. As far as specifics for the establishment that we have, I agree with the existing cap on late-night establishments that prior council has put into place, which basically means that we do not need to be permitting any new late-night establishments that serve alcohol late night until we have this issue better handled and managed. As to any existing businesses that would like to have additional hours or have changes to their CUP, there's a CUP modification process, and that modification process goes through the planning commission, and it's evaluated on a case-by-case basis.
You can summarize.
And any entity that currently exists that has a CUP that thinks that CUP should be modified, should go through that modification process.
Thanks, Haney. Trent?
Yes. Most of our alcohol-related issues center around the pier area, and they center around late night. So I'm still in the opinion that we could do more with our policing and with the business owners themselves to mitigate any issues we have regarding alcohol and the pier. And I think the cameras go a long way, and I've also said that perhaps we should park a cruiser on the, in the courtyard at Saturday night, Friday night. I think that would help. Regarding alcohol specifically, though, and increasing in Hermosa, I do think there's a couple of properties in Hermosa that could use a nice restaurant when they get redeveloped. And those are our gateway properties. And those properties are on the corner of Artesia and PCH, and also on the corner of Prospect and Aviation. Those two properties, especially Prospect and Aviation, that's a gateway property, and at some point, it's going to be redeveloped. So Suzie's in, is there right now, and I know Sal, for a long, long time, wanted to get a liquor license, and he was denied.
Can you summarize?
Yeah. I'm just saying that when that gets redeveloped, and if a nice restaurant goes in and wants to have drinks, and they close at 10:00 at night, I don't think we should automatically say no.
Thanks, Trent. Okay, next question. We'll do it pretty quick here. This has to do with alcohol sales after midnight. The city commissioned a report from a consultant, and that report was basically to analyze the effect, the downtown, the effects of alcohol, and how much money is being made for the city on this. And what they came up with is, over a year basis of operating all hours in the year, the city made 3.1, I think it was 3.9 million in profit or cash, but the costs were about 3.6 million. So there's a total positive benefit of $300,000. But when they, when this same report analyzed sales after midnight, the costs were $300,000 higher over the year. So we have $300,000 additional costs, policing costs, and all other costs involved in this to operate, have these alcohol outlets operate. So that's $300,000 a year. I'll get to the question. How significant a problem is alcohol-related crime in the downtown area after midnight? Do the positive impacts outweigh the negative impacts of alcohol sales after midnight in Hermosa Beach? Do you ever see alcohol sales after midnight being a big moneymaker for the city of Hermosa Beach? And that'd be for Stacy.
Thank you, Al. Alcohol-related crime is a problem in town. We had three of our officers assaulted in our downtown last November, and that was a huge wake-up call for me personally, for our city, and for our city council. I've been working with our city manager, our chief, and the mayor on developing a comprehensive plan for our downtown that will be presented in the next bunch of weeks. Snapshot of that is, we will need better lighting throughout our downtown, our alleys, our parking lots, and our parking structure. We need a cleaner downtown. We need better options for trash pickup. We need an aesthetically pleasing downtown that makes people think twice before urinating or vomiting in our plaza streets or our parking structure. We need to continue to supplement our police officers with security officers until we can fill our vacant police officer positions and get our arms around the crime that occurs in our downtown. And we need to continue building that relationship between the city and our hospitality association to make sure they know we all play a part in the solution. As far as the bar's being viewed as a moneymaker, the facts are in. It's a push at best. But we want people to be able to go out and have a good time. We also want to curb that behavior of trashing our downtown, inciting violence on other patrons and on our police officers. But this wasn't a problem that was created overnight, and it's not something we can look to solve overnight either. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Stacy. Matt?
Thank you, Al. I believe the alcohol-related crime in the downtown area after midnight is significant. I live in the downtown area. I live on Pier Avenue. I regularly walk down there at night to observe because I really want to truly understand this problem. I believe we have a criminal element in the downtown area that consumes alcohol to make alcohol-related crimes. But I think first and foremost, the problems are being created by the criminals, the criminal element, who are drinking alcohol, versus the alcohol is causing these criminals to become criminal. And the second part of your question is, as far as alcohol sales after midnight is a big moneymaker for the city versus the, maybe from the 9:00 p.m. to the midnight. Unfortunately, these are not mutually exclusive statistics. I believe the alcohol sales for after midnight are really, really, the alcohol sales from between 9:00 and 10:00, and 10:00 to midnight depend on having alcohol available after midnight. So it does affect the businesses. So, and that was the reason why we ended up passing Measure B, or not passing Measure B, is because alcohol sales after midnight are necessary to have a thriving business prior to midnight.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Mary?
Yes, thank you. I agree with everyone who's spoken that we have a significant problem in our downtown. We have crimes going on that are not only, it struck me on my ride-along just how sort of out of step it seemed to be with the waking days in Hermosa Beach. It's fascinating dynamic. Do the costs, does the money raised outweigh the cost? Not really. Stacy Armato spoke to that just now. I won't say more about that. But again, there's not a quick fix, and we do want people to have fun. I think, I've been listening all night. We've touched on this enough, and kind of have an evolved thought. Mr. Tucker keeps talking about the beach culture, and I completely get it. I mean, it's actually causing me to think more about the beach culture and what it is and all that it is, and certainly all that we want our beach culture to be. But I'm kind of coming around to the fact that it doesn't necessarily mean that Hermosa Beach forever has the branding that this is the place, that everybody comes and gets kind of stupid drunk, and then trashes our town. Because I saw it firsthand, and it was shocking. There's a lot we can do to make it better now, and I think we should. But I'm also interested long-term in figuring out if we want to take this story somewhere else. Thank you.
Thanks. Haney, your ear.
So I think everybody here has already addressed the issue that we agree that there's a problem downtown. I'm not sure of the midnight significance, but there's a problem downtown, and the weekend's usually associated with alcohol and drinking. I've driven with our police officers on Friday and Saturday nights before, and I've seen them dealing with the intoxicated individuals. There's, you know, scenarios where I've seen where people were just carrying, people were just completely passed out in downtown, and because of our resources, the police weren't even prompted to call an ambulance, like, well, they'll just get over it. A lot of people throwing up, a lot of people getting arrested. So it's just, it's an ongoing problem. We've already talked about the subcommittee of Councilmember Armato and Mayor Massey that are working on this with our police department, so we're looking forward to their results. We've also hired a security company to help address this issue. And again, I don't know that the midnight timeframe is an issue. I agree with what Mr. McCool mentioned, that I think for a business to close at midnight, it's gonna impact the business's profitability. So I'm not in favor of having businesses shut down at midnight, because I don't think that's a critical issue, as long as all the other issues are more appropriately handled. I'm not opposing to having businesses that are currently only allowed to open till midnight under your CUP apply for a CUP modification to the planning commission, as I mentioned before, in response to another question.
You can summarize.
And then the last question that Al mentioned about, do I believe that sales after midnight has a big moneymaker? No, I don't think so. And I think a lot of people don't understand this, that the sales tax that we get out of, the sales tax is one cent of the dollar. We don't get the nine or 10 cents. We don't get the nine or 10 cents. So I did a quick numbers, for a million dollars of sales after midnight, the city gets all of $10,000. So I don't think that's a sound moneymaker, and I don't think we would make any decisions based on money-making about selling alcohol after midnight. But again, as I mentioned, for a business to be operable and profitable, you can't have people come in and says, well, we're going to shut you down at midnight, you have to go home, you have to have longer hours for some of these businesses downtown to be profitable.
Thanks, Haney. Trent?
Yeah, I'm very concerned about alcohol-related issues down on the pier after midnight. I think everyone in this town, if they could pick one thing that we can all kind of agree on is that we'd like to see the downtown-related alcohol issues be mitigated to virtually none. But I'm not so sure that's possible. So what we want to do is reduce them. And all of the things that, a lot of the things that have been talked here tonight would help that. Additional security guards, that would be private security guards. Additional lighting, that's something visible and usable that I would definitely support. Other things that we could use down on the pier to make it more safe, I keep going back to the cruiser on the, in the middle, but also working with the business owners, they're very concerned about this because they understand that the community, and we talk about this in the debates, we talk about it in a lot of different places, don't want that kind of element chewing up and tearing up our downtown. So I think greater enforcement is in order. I don't think, there is a process in place by which you can change cups, CUPs. So that's there, that's available, that business owners know that, and they feel that they have to do right in order to keep their license the way that it is. So I think the more light we shed on the subject, and I do mean light, actual light down there on the pier, will make it better. Okay.
Thanks, Trent.
Thank you.
Okay, Pete?
Thank you. It's interesting how we pick midnight as when it all really happens. It probably really starts about 10:00 o'clock, and by midnight, that's when it kicks in. So it's just an ongoing thing. Picking midnight, I think is just, it sounds good maybe, because it's the next day after midnight. But we've always had a problem down there. It's, like I've stated earlier, it's a culture and we have that reputation, and I think that what we were doing over the Fourth of July really curtailed a lot of those problems. We took a tough stand and said, you can come down to Hermosa, have a good time, but if you have parties at your home and we respond twice, we're sending you the bill. Overnight, all these problems went away. So somehow, maybe we could take that kind of strategy and use it downtown. Most of the establishments down there, they meet with the police chief and everything, they're doing everything they can, but we can't control the human element of what comes down there. The coastal commission, I remember one time I went to a meeting, they, city wanted to close their pier area, and the coastal commission said, absolutely not, it has to have coastal access. And they were having crimes and more crimes, and coastal said, we don't care. But it is a problem there. Are we making a lot of money out of this? Absolutely not. We could use our resources somewhere else. Our police are overwhelmed down there. They're really being put in harms' way, along with our fire department personnel. And what the answer is, I think if you could find that magic bullet, you would win this council seat up here unanimously, everyone would vote for you. But it's a problem that we have to try to figure out how to do something that we can get maybe, you know, they have dress codes down there at the bars and restaurants, so we thought that would help. That doesn't seem to help. So it's a real problem. It's just a cultural problem that somehow we have to figure out how to stop the problem.
Okay, thanks, Pete. We'll go to the next question real fast. Basically, I'll do a really quick setup on this. This is also, again, about alcohol. This is about two cities, and they're in the alcohol harms study, Hermosa Beach and Manhattan Beach. In the alcohol harms study, Hermosa Beach had double the crime, double the violent crime of Manhattan Beach. And then for the last four years, the, according to the FBI Uniform Crime Reporting System, Hermosa had doubled the number of rapes. So for the last four years on a per capita basis, double, and almost double the number of aggravated assaults. And what's interesting about the alcohol harms outlet study, they're both cities are ranked high in alcohol outlets. So we have two very similar cities, very close to each other. They both have a lot of alcohol outlets, but we have doubled the number of rapes and almost double the number of alcohol or aggravated assaults. I'll read the question. Numerous crime research studies have Hermosa Beach ranked as having higher rates of violent crime than comparable cities listed in the, in the research reports. In particular, Hermosa Beach appears to have a higher, higher crime rate for rape and aggravated assault compared to Manhattan Beach. To what do you attribute these higher rates of crime in Hermosa Beach and not in the other comparable cities? Matt?
Thank you, Al. First and foremost, since we're talking about compared to Manhattan Beach, Manhattan Beach has three times the budget that we have and less than half, double, double the population that we have. So it's, it's really what it comes down to, it's about resources and police resources. Second issue is, is visitors. They probably have a higher volume of visitors to the city, and also we have to look at the socioeconomics of the people that are coming in. Compared to Palos Verdes, or Rancho's Palos Verdes, you're not seeing those types of people go visit because there's not a venue for them to go visit. So, and the third issue would be a lack of aggressive prosecution.
Okay, Matt, thanks. Mary?
Yeah, since we've spoken so much, I think I'll try to be additive here with my, my I think it's more than just resources, actually. I think there's this reputational dynamic that, you know, I wasn't here, I don't think, at the time, but I've been told by many people that the party town has moved from beach town to beach town over the longer history. So for example, there were bikers once that used to hang out in Hermosa, I don't know when that was. There was, there was a real big party scene in Manhattan at one point. Maybe some of the people who've lived here 37 years, right, can fill us in on that a little bit more. But I, I just think that you also hear a lot that, well, let me, let me finish one thing. Manhattan Beach deliberately made decisions in order to turn that situation around. That's what I've been told more than a couple of times. I hear all over the place, I want to be very clear, that I am not interested at all in Hermosa Beach turning into Manhattan Beach. It's very different. The layout's different, I think that's actually one of our challenges. Pier Plaza is very, there it is. But I think there's a way to retain the Hermosa character that we all love, that is very quaint and very unique, and it's just very, very special, and still turn this boat, Titanic boat, hopefully not a Titanic.
You can summarize?
Turn this boat around just a little bit, and so we can reach for a downtown that our entire community can enjoy, can stay up late, can drink maybe a little bit too much, and feel very safe to be there doing that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Haney?
So the question is, what do you attribute the higher rates of violent crime in Hermosa and not in other comparable cities like Manhattan? I think part of it at Manhattan Beach, they like to drink Sungal Moth Scotch, and here in Hermosa, we like to drink tequila, and I think that may increase the violent issues. But I think that the report that you're giving us, Al, is a little difficult to make a clear comparison. There's only two cities that are involved, and again, the type of people and the businesses are completely different, so it's hard for us to make a conclusion of why it is that Hermosa Beach has a higher, greater violent crime. And the resources issue is something that was raised and clearly was part of the process. What we've also heard from our police chief and police captain is that AB 109 and Proposition 47 have resulted in a lot of people being out of jail sooner than they should be, and therefore obviously maybe part of the, increasing the crime rate. But as far as our resources that we have, and we go through this every year in budget allocation, about 60% of our entire city budget is spent on public safety. So it's not like we are taking this lightly. It's not like we're saying, well, it's okay, we have violent crimes in downtown, we'll just let it be. In addition to the police and fire folks that we have, we've also hired the additional private company to facilitate in this process. And I think, I think as maybe already mentioned by others, part, based on my going through with our police officers on those ride-alongs, a lot of the reasons for a lot of our violent crimes, especially day and night and the weekends, are visitors, not residents of the city of Hermosa Beach, because when they arrest them and they look through the records, they realize most of these people do not live in the city of Hermosa Beach. So additional enforcement would help, but again, I think we're using the resources that we have in the best way that we can, and looking forward to additional recommendations that will come to the council soon that hopefully we can incorporate and implement.
Thanks, Haney. Trent?
The crimes listed in this question are really, very serious. And if these types of crimes are being committed, I would like to see the prosecution of the perpetrator and be very aggressive, so that people know when they come to this town and do this kind of thing, that they are going to be punished to the fullest extent that we can do it. And I think that in itself will start to deter it. We can change the culture, and we can change the pier area, and we can use basic tools to do that, and I think we're on that path right now. The extra security guards, the extra lighting, the extra officers in the middle of the area, working with the bar owners themselves specifically to reduce this. And if they don't, then maybe we have some sort of consequences associated to it. But it is the perpetrators, it is the criminal that needs to be dealt with severely. And once they get the notion, and it's out, and people who come from out of town, who are causing most of the crime of this nature, and they find out that they're going to get the book thrown at them, we can turn this around and stop it.
Thanks, Trent. Pete?
Thank you. As I've stated before, there's no crime that should not go unpunished anywhere, and we keep seeing this over and over again, and I know we do take them probably, I know we take them to prosecution. These stats that we're looking at here are from 2014 and 15, and I know over the year, last three years here, the police department has changed their operations to try to reduce these kinds of crimes. And then we ask, why do we still have a higher crime rate than Manhattan? Well, in Manhattan, most of their establishments close by midnight, so the people say, well, let's go down to the plaza. It's open till 2:00, so we'll finish partying down there. So that, that's one problem we have. And currently, since this report was written, we have five fewer late-night bars in operation down there in the downtown at this time, so I'm sure that helps with the population and then hopefully the crime rate. The town downtown really needs a mixed, mixed retail and restaurants. The city needs to promote the downtown instead of continually sitting up here and saying how bad it is down there. I think we need to, we need to rise up and take our plaza back and our downtown area back. We need to maybe promote family events down there on the weekend.
You can summarize?
To bring families back down there, but I think it's time that we, the citizens, said, you know, enough's enough, we're going to go down and use our plaza, and maybe that'll deter these people from coming down thinking it's, they can do whatever they want. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Pete. Stacy?
Thank you, Al. I've seen all of this with my own eyes on ride-alongs and going myself into the downtown at night. Not necessarily by myself, I always bring somebody. But on any given weekend night, there are fights, there's drinking in public, there's people passed out on benches, there's people urinating in public, you name it. It's happening in our downtown. Our town is a different place after 10:00 at night. I'm not a statistician, but you don't need a PhD to see this relationship between alcohol and crime. We should always be striving for ways to decrease this level of crime in our town, and we can do that by increasing the lighting downtown and in the alleys, properly utilizing our cameras in Pier Plaza and our network of home cameras to help identify suspects and help deter future crime. We need to fill our vacant police officer positions. It's a really slow process, but our chief is getting these positions filled as quickly as she can. We just approved another officer a year for four years that's mostly funded by grant money for the first few years and leaves us no obligation to continue with them if we can improve this rate of crime in town. And finally, we need to cultivate that relationship that we have with our hospitality association. These high rates of crime don't attract patrons to their restaurants or to our retailers, and I see no reason why we shouldn't be working together on solutions. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Okay, last debate question. This is going to be really quick, so I'll just set it up really fast. The city of Hermosa Beach commissioned another consulting report. It's called the ICMA Consulting Report for the Hermosa Beach Police Department. So they did an operational study. They interviewed all the police officers, they interviewed all stakeholders, they interviewed residents and whatever. And these are the people putting on, doing this consulting are not just consultants, they're retired police officers. So these are men and women with 20, 30 years of experience in police operations around the country. So we commissioned this report, and I'll just hit two or three of the highlights and then read the question. It says also, or it says the Hermosa Beach Police Department handles a large number of disturbance calls, calls for service undoubtedly originating from the downtown. ICMA recommends that the Hermosa Beach Police Department establish a committee that includes all principal stakeholders, including representatives from all ranks of the department, along with community members. Basically, properly dealing, what they're stating is properly dealing with these disturbances requires long-term problem-solving and resources. So I'll read the question here. Do you agree with the quote from the ICMA report, "It is clear that a large number of calls for services are related, related to the downtown. Properly dealing with these disturbances requires long-term problem-solving and resources." Do you agree with the ICMA's recommendation to empanel a calls-for-service committee that includes principal stakeholders, including representatives from all ranks of the department, along with community members? What, if you agree, what steps would you take to establish a calls-for-service committee? That's for Mary.
Yes. Okay, I guess the easy part of this is, yes, in, I would agree with these quotes. It's always a good idea to create a complete cross-section of all the stakeholders to attack a thorny, complicated challenge and problem in a, in a community, in this case. One question that did come up for me when I was thinking about this, and I would need more information to understand all of the other, you know, groups and/or task forces and/or efforts that are already underway so that we could distinguish how this would contribute something different and needed in this big equation that we've been spending quite a bit of time talking about now. So obviously, we all care about it, but if it were deemed that this would, would play a special role in, in this effort to kind of turn things around for the problems that we have there, what I would do is, I guess as a council member, I would work with my colleagues to get alignment first about this as a prioritization and then provide direction to the city manager to, you know, in all likelihood, work with Chief Papa in order to initiate a committee. If a committee, and again, I just say no committee just for committee's sake, but the committee that has a very specific defined purpose and role that is going to add to, to our solution path. I liked the suggestion that it would be all kind of levels of the police force, a crime analyst, patrol officers, sergeants, et cetera, business owners. Yes, absolutely. I love all the comments about partnering with business owners. I don't know the extent at which we've done that so far, or how successful it has been if we have.
You can summarize?
And it would just have to be well-structured, and it would have to be very clear what the outcomes would be to make it worthwhile, and I will stop there.
Okay, thanks, Mary. Haney?
I agree with the references included in the question. I think we've already established that we do have a downtown problem. We also have a downtown task force working on this issue. We have private security that's helping our police department address issues. So I would defer some of these questions about next steps until we get the recommendations from the task force that's working on it. But if I had to act now without these recommendations, I would agree with empaneling a committee that includes police, fire, CSOs, members of the chamber, E-PAC commissioners, and our businesses to put together, you know, a group of people that would provide input going forward. And then lastly, I will close by encouraging those of you that are still here. Our police department's still looking for, or the Neighborhood Watch is still looking for block captains. So if there's no block captains in your block and you're willing to volunteer, please do, or somebody else to do it. And also, our police department has urged us over the last year to register our security cameras with the police department, so if something happens in the city, they can have access to it. So if you have security cameras in your home and you haven't registered, you can do that. And if you have any questions on that, George Moe at the police department is the person to reach out to. Thank you.
Thanks, Haney. Thanks, Haney. Trent?
Yeah, again, this is something that I'm very concerned with, which is, you know, alcohol-related issues late night down in the pier. And this is something that is visible and usable, and it requires a targeted effort to fix, and it is effort that can fix this. We need greater participation from everybody. It's almost like the coach of the New England Patriots, Bill Belichick, says, "Do your job." We need the, we need additional security guards, we need additional lighting that we've already talked about, we need additional participation with the hospitality industry and the bar owners, and we need additional enforcement from our police officers for people who are committing crimes and/or public drunkenness so that we can stop it. I think if, you know, the police may be stretched, but if, if people are publicly intoxicated, it might not be a bad idea to pull some of them in and put them in the clink for the night. Because once people get that idea and they hear it, they may stop on their own. This is something that people are doing to themselves, and it's legal, and we live in a free country. So, but we can address it with just more enforcement, and we can change it.
Thanks, Trent. Pete?
Thank you. Years ago, I know we had, when we were reviewing their CUPs, we always had this horrendous number of calls to service, which meant the, possibly someone inside the establishments or the bars needed help removing someone, and at the time, everyone felt that maybe we shouldn't do that, so some of those were removed. However, the bars do have their own security, which has to be approved by the chief, and basically, they hire their disturbances inside their, their building. Our police department has continually worked with these downtown businesses to get a reduction of the problems. And as I've said earlier, once you have one problem solved, there's one that you never thought of pops up again. As far as a panel and committee, right now, the chief meets with all the businesses down there to try to continue to improve the safety downtown, the problems that our police department is having. So I think we, the chief has taken a proactive stance in that to inform the businesses, and from what I hear, they've responded as best they can, there again, based on the nature of the people coming.
You can summarize, Pete.
The chief has added additional security to help in the downtown area. Lighting is a key element, we need to light that up like it's high noon down there constantly. And I hope with the additional security we have and the show of force, hopefully, we'll get some results as we have with the Fourth of July security ramp-up that we've had. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Pete. Stacy?
Thanks, Al. I'm not surprised that we have a large number of calls for service related to disturbances, and that number should come down if we can properly implement some of the work the downtown subcommittee has been working on. We're working on diligently reducing crime through environmental design models. We are adding four new subsidized officers and filling all police officer positions that are currently open. We're looking into reviving a downtown substation. And if I've not said it enough in this meeting, within the next month, we are presenting this to council as a comprehensive downtown plan that's the product of nearly nine months of meetings for their consideration. And if we only look at the crime reports, we're really not seeing the whole picture of what's happening, which is why examining those calls for service is really important. There are much fewer actual crime reports filed than calls for service made, which means we're getting an inaccurate read on the fights, noise, and other disturbances that are happening in our community. And I would anticipate this gap to shrink once we fill those vacant police officer positions and add new officers to our department. That being said, after the subcommittee presentation, it may not be necessary to have a separate committee on calls for service. I do think we need greater transparency and reporting for calls, service calls, and for public safety and for planning. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Matt?
Thanks, Al. The question is whether, do I believe with the quote here from the ICMA report? The answer is absolutely yes, I do. As far as creating the committee, I personally believe the city council creates policy, and this committee would be a tactical decision ultimately. I think we should make set policy, and the chief police should go ahead and implement that. I think one of the policies that we should have is a zero tolerance policy for violent crime in the downtown area, and let her take lead on how that would happen. Thanks, Al.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, we're going to be going to closing statements, and once again, Stacy started out with the opening statement, so Pete is going to start out with the closing statement, and that's going to work to Trent Haney and then back this way. So you have two minutes for your closing statement. Pete?
Okay, thank you. All of us who live and work in Hermosa Beach have invested in our homes and businesses for the incredible lifestyle that Hermosa offers. Our small-town atmosphere, our eclectic neighborhoods, our award-winning schools and great businesses, outstanding recreational venues, opportunities to walk or bike to many local destinations, and the ability to escape the tensions of contemporary life by strolling along our spectacular beaches are all the essential parts of our distinctive beach culture. My wife and I love Hermosa Beach, and I am committed to maintaining this unique character and high quality of life of our best little beach city. Together, we can protect the local environment, promote local businesses, and address our infrastructure needs through reasonable programs that never lose sight of our heritage and our beach culture. And also, this time, I would like to also remind people that at the beginning of this year, we will see a transition from the Hermosa Beach Fire Department to the Los Angeles County Fire Department. And at this time, I would like everyone in the city to, if you see a fireman or even a policeman, but mainly the firefighters, thank them for their service. Some of them have been working five days in a row, that's a 24-hour shift for five days, and I think that they are, they recommended that we go with the county, they're all happy that they are actually going to be able to work close to their home, be able to advance up in rank where they were stymied here because of the small department. And we will be welcoming a world-class organization called Los Angeles County Fire. It was worldwide renowned, but I think we will be, if not better, even more services with the county than our guys could have provided due to their workload. So I just want to thank our firefighters for their dedication to the city and keeping the city safe all these years. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Pete. Okay, Trent?
Well, thank you, and thank you for watching, those of you at home, and thank you, the audience members, for staying here. This has been a long evening, and I really appreciate it. What I can offer to Hermosa Beach is focused and constructive and inspirational leadership that delivers the promise of betterment to Hermosa Beach. My core campaign message puts Hermosa Beach first on the priority list. I want to spend our tax dollars on visible, usable improvements such as the infrastructure, the community center, public parks, Clark Field, the Green Belt, the Business District, the city buildings, city cleanliness, and the reconstruction of our schools. And in doing that, we will make Hermosa Beach better for the residents and guests by spending money on things that we can use. Constructive collaboration, and I do this every day for a living, I have to work, I call them the who's who of Los Angeles, and now I'm in the public sector, so I have great big public sector accounts, with the city leaders and advocate reasonable and deliverable solutions. And that deliverable is important, because we have to focus on things that we can actually do and accomplish, okay, that move the rock down the field. The rock is a term for football in the cold weather. So we move it down the field, and I want to support Hermosa Beach businesses and attract new businesses, and that would expand our tax base and enhance services. I think that's very important. I'd like to preserve our small-town character and charm. We have a very unique town, it's a little teeny town right on the beach, the best beach in the world, arguably, and it's a small town. That's fascinatingly unique, and I want to keep it that way. I want to upgrade the police and fire services, okay? We have gone to the county, and we're going to get our money's worth, and we're going to get a new building, and we're, and we're going to make it work. I talked earlier about the fact that I didn't like it, but now that we're there, we're going to make it work. Transparent Hermosa Beach governance, that is to say, the act of governing. I think, for those of you who have heard me tonight, you might get a feel that I can tell you where I'm coming from in a short order.
You can summarize.
And I'm going to support the reconstruction of our schools. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Trent. Haney?
So my wife and I feel that we're blessed to live in this incredible town that a lot of people like to go there to vacation, to enjoy time, and this is what we call home. We love this town, we love the community, we love what this community has given back to our family, and again, as I mentioned before, we're planning to live here for the rest of our life. So the reason I'm running again is because I want to be part of the decision-making process when important decisions are made that impact this town, this community, and hopefully on a grander scale, the entire South Bay. So for the last few years, we've worked collectively as a council with the school district and parents to address school issues, to get Measure S passed. We work with the Planning Commission on issues that impact our quality of life, which included adopting Plan Hermosa and confirming the ban on short-time vacation rentals and many other issues. We work with the Parks and Rec Commission and staff on improving quality of life by various events and functions and things that happen in our city almost every weekend. That said, we have still a lot to do. A lot of it, we've talked about in our debate today, but we have downtown improvements, both in the physical sense and in public safety issues. We have significant infrastructure improvements for city buildings and structures. We have proposed developments that are going on in the city, including the hotel on Pier and Strand, Skechers Buildings, and other developments. And we have additional partnering that we need to do with our school board and our parents to make sure that our new school is built and our existing schools are upgraded and improved pursuant to what we promised in Measure S. So I would be honored to earn your vote and to continue to serve for you on the Hermosa Beach City Council going forward. I want to quickly thank everybody for being here and those that are watching at home. I want to also thank our neighbors from Manhattan Beach and Redondo Beach that are here with us today, because again, I think our city is so small that it's very important for us to work with our neighboring cities. And then lastly, in closing, in case I forget anything that I said tonight, I'm going to be checking the minutes that Pete Tucker is going to be putting on his website tomorrow to make sure that I remember what I said about tonight, because that's very important. It's going to be tomorrow morning, right, Pete? So I'm looking forward to that. Thank you, Al.
Yeah, thanks, Haney. Mary?
These people deserve a special prize. We do still have people in the room, and I hope there are others watching from home. So I'll give kind of a, a little bit of a different closing statement, because I shared a nice segment earlier, but it's been a great evening, very fascinating evening, and especially, it's an important evening. I want to thank you all for, wherever you are, for bringing your attention and your intention and your hearts and minds to this forum. I'd like to share one more thing about my professional experience that I didn't have time to share in my opening statement, but that is, as the Assistant Vice President for Organizational Effectiveness at USC, where I worked for 15 years, I think it's very important to point out that USC is very much like a city unto itself, with over 26,000 employees and 44,000 students. And over the years, I have collaborated literally side by side in partnership in support of the university's overall finance group, administrative operations, risk management, lot of public safety interface, they were actually in my same division that I was in, so very close to those folks. Fire, earthquake, and emergency planning, general counsel, human resources, healthcare systems, hospitality, and I'm just kind of going on to give you a sense that I have touched all these sort of very critical elements that all have to work together in a very interdependent way, and that has given me a sense of really understanding the complexities of these interdependencies holistically, and I feel that that's exactly what we're doing as we are governing a city. So I shared my, my emotional speech, I'll jump to, the fact that as I run for city council, what I really think is that we need the wisest, the most talented leaders on every single level, including inside of our community throughout Hermosa, because this is about 20 years from now, 50, 100 years from now, and what we're going to see when we reach those milestone moments in our lifespan as a city. I'm warning everyone now that I tend to be an unbridled optimist when it comes to what's possible. I wish I had $5 for every time someone said, "Mary, you'll never be able to do that here." This would be USC, and every single time we did it. I don't quit, I don't stop, and, and I find a way to get things done. So I also like to have fun along the way, and I think as a community who has had heavy issues in the years, recent years that I've been around, it's important that we kind of lighten ourselves and come together. And to that point, I believe strongly that this city is for all of us who are, who are here, all of us who live here, we will not always agree, but I do strive to bring us together as neighbors, to try and pull our best ideas and advance the best ones forward. That's, I know what we're trying to do, and it may or may not always feel that we're achieving that.
You can summarize.
But, you know, if you look on the wall, really struck me in the orientation, we report to the electorate, to all of you, and that's the city council, and then the CEO of the city, our city manager, Sergio, reports to the council, who reports to you. And so in closing, is my hope that I can bring my integrity, my experience, my skills, my significant energy, so I'm told, and my heart to benefit Hermosa at this very pivotal time. And you can find more about where I stand in my campaign at maryforhermosa.com. I would love to hear from you, and I would love to earn your support. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Matt?
Thank you, Al. I'll be brief and summarize from my opening statements. There's three areas I want to, want to focus on as a council member. First and foremost is public safety. I think from the lesson that we learned from our fire station, our fire service, it's important that we need to make public safety a higher priority. Second issue is ending carbon neutrality, not because of the climate change aspect of it, it's just, it's become a divisive issue within the city, and I'd like to see us come together. And the third aspect would be, is focused on economic and business development within the community. We saw from the code enforcement study that a lot of the people in the community feel that we are over-regulated, especially the businesses. And tonight, we spent a lot of time discussing the violent crime in the downtown area, and I want to close with this, I actually found this today, and I find it intriguing because it's something I had been talking about for a while, and when we have our CUP reviews, we talk about crime, but we don't talk about the arrests, and we don't talk about convictions. And on page 10 of this ICMA report, under miscellaneous, there is a concern, a concern that the city prosecutor is not pursuing prosecutions vigorously enough. On page 34, they have a list of all the bullet points that, that we need to do here for the city. We are following all of them except for, ensure the city prosecutor and district attorney provide enhanced prosecution of all capitalized cases occurring in the downtown area. I want to read last, one last paragraph here on page 40. In addition to solving cases by arrest, cases must be prosecuted successfully to ensure the full, the full of the criminal justice system. If an arrest is made and the defendant is not prosecuted, then the differentiated value of the law is undermined and the effectiveness of the police department is compromised. I'll go ahead and close with that. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Stacy?
Thank you, Al, for hosting this, and thank you to my friends and colleagues here and to all of you watching at home for your consideration. Since being elected a year and a half ago, I've committed to meeting regularly with residents and business owners to get problems resolved and move ideas forward. Hermosa is a mix of long- and short-term residents, local businessmen and women, commuters and those working from home, young professionals barely able to afford their rent, and owners of brand-new Strand homes, moms and dads and their kids. And the one thing you always come away with is that people love living in Hermosa Beach. Sure, the weather's great and our schools are excellent, but what people say over and over, one way or another, that Hermosa is a community, not just a city, that they live in a neighborhood, not just on a street. They walk to dinner on a Friday night, they bike across town to visit with friends, and they feel safe and secure when they come home from work. And retaining that sense of place while trying to navigate the inevitable forces of economic, social, environmental, and political change is a challenge. There'll be a lot of work to do in the next five years, but I'm up for that challenge. I've committed to Hermosa Beach in every way you could imagine. We own a home here, my husband owns a business here, and my kids attend the great schools here. I want my children and your children I want my children and your children to enjoy what we all have in Hermosa. That'll take creativity, a lot of hard work, financial prudence, and the willingness to say yes to change when it's right, but to stand firm when it's not. I hope to provide that sensible voice to continue to move our city forward with pride. I will face challenges honestly and openly, always seeking fairness and a full measure of community input. I hope to earn your vote and to continue to serve you. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Well, that's great. This, I'm glad for, everybody, you know, has to realize that running for city council is a larger commitment. Being a city council member is a large commitment. And I want to personally thank all the city council candidates for committing to this debate. And you put a lot of effort in, and I hope I didn't overwhelm you too much with all the papers. So anyway, that's the end of our debate. Thanks.
Thank you, Al.